To everyone who is attending our meeting today, my name is councillor Ben Miskel. I'm chair of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee today. Thank you for everyone who is in the room, who's here to ask a question or to watch proceedings. You are very welcome. Today, the meeting is open to the public and will be webcast and a recording will be available for people to view later through the council's website. It's also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. We've received two petitions and 16 questions from members of the public. And both the petitions, the questions and the answers amount to over 11,000 words today. So thank you very much for submitting your questions. The agenda and reports for today's meetings are available on the council's website and a small amount of paper copies are available in the room. Please, of course, can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode, which is a reminder for me as well as everyone else, so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today and it's very noisy when it does happen, but there's no scheduled one. If there's an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. And the assembly point is in Tudor Square and hopefully it is dry outside at the moment. Please, can I ask each committee member in turn to introduce themselves? And I will start with Craig. Hi Craig.
Hello there. Thanks to everyone who's come today. My name's Craig Appleby. I'm councillor for East Echelstone Ward.
Hi, I'm David Barker. I'm councillor for Regional Ward.
Good afternoon. I'm Christine Gilligan. I'm a councillor for Hillsborough Ward and I'm deputy chair of this committee.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's councillor Ruth Mercerow and I represent City Ward.
Good afternoon. I'm councillor Richard Shaw. I'm the Lib Dem councillor for Beechham Greenhill Ward.
Good afternoon. I'm councillor Andrew Sanger. I'm councillor for Forward Ward and I'm the Lib Dem group spokesperson on this committee.
Good afternoon. I'm councillor Ian Auckland. I represent Graves Park Ward.
Thank you very much. That takes us to item one on our agenda today. That's apologies for absence. Amanda, can I ask whether there's been any apologies for absence?
Thank you, Chair. My name is Amanda Clayton, Democratic Services. I had no apologies for absence, but councillor Said has indicated she'll be a few moments late.
Thank you very much for the clarification on that. Item three, sorry, item two is exclusion of the public and press, which is a normal process that we ask. There have been no items that have been identified that would require the exclusion of the public or press for this particular meeting. Item number three is declarations of interests. Can I ask whether any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda? If so, can I please ask you to refer to the item of business and state whether it's a pecuniary or personal interest and outline the reason for the specific declaration? Councillor Sanger.
Thank you, Chair. It's item numbers nine and 10. It's a personal interest that my son owns and lives in a flat in Kelham Island.
Thank you very much, councillor Sanger. We will note that for the record. Councillor Mizerow.
Thank you again. Items nine and 10, I'm councillor for the ward.
Thank you for the clarification and we'll note that as well. So that therefore takes us to item number four, which is minutes of our previous meeting. And I'd like to ask members whether they are content to approve as a correct record the minutes of the meeting of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee, which were held on the 14th of June 2023. You'll find those on pages one to 21 of the supplementary agenda pack. Can I ask that these are approved as a true record of the meeting? I'm seeing nods from colleagues in the chamber. Thank you. So they are therefore approved as a true record of the meeting. Thank you very much. The next section is item five, which is public questions and petitions. We received two petitions and 16 public questions for today's meeting, which is wonderful. Please note that there is a maximum of 30 minutes for this item, but I'm mindful that people have taken the time to be here and actively engaged in the democratic process. And so with members' agreement, I'd like to suggest that we extend this item to 45 minutes on this occasion. I'm seeing nodding from colleagues, so therefore we will extend this particular item to 45 minutes. Just as a guidance to members of the public, citizens of the city who are here today, each person will have two minutes to pose their question. Three minutes if you have a petition and you'll be invited to come and sit at the desk in front and we will ask you to turn on your microphones so that people in the room, as well as outside, who may be watching on the live stream, can hear you. We'd ask that, in order to be fair to everyone, and in doing so, we'd ask you to minimise the preamble and please highlight the key issues in your specific question. Some of the questions we've received do require, of course, a more detailed response with technical information that officers need time to prepare to ensure that you've received a really accurate answer. With this in mind, and also to make sure that we've covered everything that's been asked, of course, full written responses will be provided after the meeting. That therefore leads us on to the questions and petitions. We've received two petitions and the first petition, the lead petitioner is Elizabeth Lamamine, and it is about a pedestrian crossing point at Forward Road, Hanging Water Road and Gladstone Road junction. Is Elizabeth in the room today? Hi Elizabeth.
Hello.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Elizabeth. Yes, please do take a seat there and when you're ready, if you could, press the button. And if you could just introduce yourself. Thank you. Just as a guide, we also have a light just at the side of me that will indicate green if you're okay for time or amber and it will give you a 30 seconds warning or red if we'd like you to draw to a close your contributions. Thank you.
Yeah, since I've not got long, I understand the council is committed to enabling active travel and making that an attractive option. So I'll skip the bits of the petition that were about that. We got 755 signatures on change.org and when I just do sit down to postcode, Sheffield postcode, it was 554. So I'm just going to focus on criteria that I was given by Alexandra Redman, senior transport planner, as to how you make the decisions about installing crossings. Number one was impact on pedestrian and cyclist collisions. And there have been some collisions here between cars. The speed limit is 30 miles an hour, which at that speed, there's a significant risk of death if you are knocked over. There's a blind corner coming up Hanging Water Road and it's a hill, so drivers are reluctant to slow down. There are traffic lights here, but there's no green man. So I think as a driver, if you see green, that means go. So you're following the lights and not looking out for pedestrians. So I think it would be really unwise to wait till somebody is hit because it could well be a death or serious injury. There are also lots of children crossing here, so I think that's, it would be a good idea to avoid that risk. Number two is degree of fear and intimidation. I'll just read a quote from the petition. "I am scared every time when I cross the junction with my son to his school. I'm worried for my son's road safety if one day he crosses this junction by himself in the future." There's lots of comments like that. Another criterion is major walking and cycling routes. I have a letter from Mr Allen, head teacher of Nethergreen Juniors. He says that Forward Road, in particular that junction, is the main route that our children and families take to attend school. The present is too dangerous for anyone to cross at that junction. I've also received supportive feedback from Notre Dame and Nethergreen Infant Schools. Lots of their kids walk along this main road and use the junction to cross. And every day you can also see kids from St Marie's Primary School crossing there, including on their own, running across the road. Another criterion is impact on local amenities. So I've got a letter from the local Butcher, Mr Beech, who's very supportive of this petition. And he says that all the local shopkeepers would really like a crossing here to enable access to their amenities. Finally, impact on people with disabilities. It's really difficult as an able-bodied person to get across, so I'd say if you have mobility issues, it's absolute nightmare. Yeah, and just finally, a few comments. This is a problem which should have been sorted years ago. So that was a comment from the petition. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth, for your question there. So thanks for your petition requesting improved crossing facilities at the Forward Road, Hanging Water Road junction. Of course, we must do all that we can to improve the safety of our streets in Sheffield and it's good to see citizens making the case for sensible measures like these. As you may know, we receive many requests for road safety and highways improvements, including improvements to assist pedestrians crossing roads throughout the year. Limitations on resources mean that we have to assess score and prioritise locations citywide and are currently only able to progress a small number every year as part of the rolling pedestrian improvement programme. The number of requests we receive for a site does not have any bearing on the prioritisation of the site. Requests are prioritised purely on the assessment score to ensure fairness across the city. Having the set criteria enables us to focus our attentions effectively on locations where measures are most urgently needed. The request for pedestrian crossing facilities at this location has been assessed and I can confirm that it did score highly and will hopefully be considered for future years programmes as delivery of the sites for the 2023/24 Pedestrian Improvement Scheme programme are already underway. So thank you very much for bringing your petition today. It's always good to see petitions and citizens being able to come towards our committees. Our next petitioner, apologies, councillor Sanger.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up what you just said there, Chair. I mean, clearly very supportive, really good that people come in with petitions in terms of improving pedestrian safety, but you know, this is an important crossing. It's something which as eight-year ward councillors, we've spoken to officers about over the years. Clearly it has got, as the petitioner rightly said, it's already got traffic lights, but it's got no pedestrian element and clearly it's on routes to schools, both Nethergreen Junior and other schools. So I will certainly take it away and remind the lack chair of the need to work with highways officers to see what we can do in terms of solution and to continue to work in terms of the 24/25 programme. I understand from highways officers that it has scored very highly, so yeah, I think it's one of those schemes where we can say something will happen at some point, but as you say, not this year. But big thanks to the petitioners and all the people who've brought their petition today. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Sanger. And you're entirely right, it did score very highly in terms of the metrics that we use and that hopefully will be included in 24/25 or beyond. That therefore leads us to petition number two, which is, the lead petitioner is Julian Coe, and it's with regards to the Chief Valley cycle route. Julian, lovely to see you today. Just as we did with the previous petitioner, we've got a light at the side of me here and it's on green at the present and will give you a 30 second warning to wrap up your contributions and that will indicate that we'd like you to bring your contributions to a close. Thank you.
My name's Julian Cole, actually not Julian Coe. Yes, I started a petition on the council website to complete and extend the Chief Valley cycle route. It gained 968 signatures. The recent traffic filter on Little London Road has had a huge effect on the number of people cycling along the Chief Valley over the last year, with more people using it each month. In June this year, 13,948 cycle trips were made along the route. Little London Road now provides a safe alternative to the main arterials of Chesterfield Road and Abidale Road, which are both incredibly dangerous roads even for experienced cyclists to use. However, Little London Road is only one very short road and without a full cycle route, the full potential of the scheme won't materialise. In Sheffield, we have some of the most dangerous roads in the country and during a cost of living and climate crisis, it is imperative that the council start providing proper joined-up cycle networks that are safe from end to end and go to where people need to get to, to provide a safe, cheap and environmentally friendly way to travel. The Sheffield cycle route was proposed years ago. Funding was awarded in 2021 through Active Travel Fund II and the initial consultation was completed in August 2021. The route was intended to run from the city centre to the bottom of Woodseats Road. Since the full tour was installed on Little London Road, there's been barely any progress on the rest of the route and the bits that have been started have been left in a semi-complete and dangerous state for months. The council need to urgently commit to completing the scheme. My petition to completely already approve Chief Valley cycle route was signed by 968 people. I'm just asking the council to please finish the route that has already been agreed in line with modern cycle infrastructure standards and extended out past Millhouses Park to Doran-Totley Railway Station. This cycle route would then have a massive catchment area which would allow those wanting to cycle but afraid to do so along the busy main arterial roads that we currently have the ability to get out of their cars. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Cole. An apology for getting your surname wrong there. It was an administrative error at our end. As Chair, I am committed to delivering the Chief Valley cycle route in its entirety and it's something that many people raised and we discussed at the Cycle Sheffield AGM last week that I attended alongside council leader Tom Hunt. Once the revised designs have been approved, we will advertise a traffic regulation order with the intention of implementing the proposals. As the petitioner will know, the Chief Valley cycle route is part of our connecting Sheffield vision, running from Norton Hammet to the city centre via Shorham Street and Little London Road. The enhanced cycle route empowers more people to walk or ride more of their daily journeys more often. Providing people with genuine choice is our intention. As part of the Chief Valley cycle route, several traffic filters and parking restrictions were introduced on a trial basis from May 2022 using an experimental traffic regulation order, an ETRO. That includes interventions at Little London Road, Myldale Road, Langdale Road, Cherry Street, Shorham Street, Achingthorpe Road and Scarsdale Road and Saxon Road. The Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee must decide to make these interventions permanent or return the highway to its former state before the ETRO expires in November 2023. Detailed monitoring and evaluation of the scheme is currently underway, which includes a range of both quantitative and qualitative survey work, which will help to inform this decision by the committee. Decisions made, the interventions above complement other schemes that are already implemented on a ponad basis along the route, including a new toucan crossing on Bramall Lane, an improved segregated or protected cycle track on Asline Road, an improved modal filter and parking restrictions on Glover Road and London Road, a signalised junction on Winchester Road and Staveley Road. The designs of the Shorham Street element of the scheme are under secondary review due to a combination of price inflation and the need to ensure that cyclists can travel safely between Matilda Street and the two-way segregated cycleway on Shorham Street. Once the revised designs have been approved, we will advertise a TRO with the intention of implementing the proposals. Extending the Chief Valley cycle route complements Sheffield City Council's ambition for citywide active travel network. This may include a branch to Doran-Totley Train Station and a branch out to Meadowhead. Development of these routes must be prioritised against other schemes which include a busy programme of active travel infrastructure projects already funded. All funded future schemes are also subject to securing central government funding from Active Travel England and the Department for Transport. And of course, I'd like to thank the petitioner for coming today and I hope that this has provided some assurance that we as a council, of course, are committed to this particular scheme and of course, cycling throughout the city. That then therefore moves us on to questions today that we have. The first question that I have is James Stevenson. James, are you in the room and would you be happy to come to the microphone? Thank you. James, you have up to two minutes.
Right, okay, thanks. So the questions I wanted to raise are predominantly around the Neepsend-Kellam Island plans. Just extracting a couple of elements from the report that was issued, just section 2.3, cleaner economic growth. There is a relationship between high-quality active travel and public transport infrastructure and regeneration. The proposed scheme will enhance sustainable access between Neepsend-Kellam Island and the city centre for residents and support. So the question is, why is the access of established businesses within the Neepsend area being sacrificed in favour of public transport towards city centre, especially when there is a large arterial road within a five-minute walking distance of that area, obviously an element that the scheme is keen to promote? Additionally, the changes within the Neepsend area will vastly increase queues and delays in both private and commercial vehicles. What information has been used to derive that this will improve and reduce usage in the area? The second element again is just regarding tackling inequalities of the scheme. This will help improve employment prospects through enhanced sustainable access to employment opportunities. As many of the businesses have raised throughout this entire consultation, that these plans will decimate a lot of the businesses in the area, will close a lot of them down, and just how will that actually be seen as enhancing employment opportunities by losing a number of established businesses? The further part is... The scheme has been designed so that all businesses remain accessible by all motor vehicles, including HGVs, but in some circumstances, the route to or from businesses may change. The positive side of which is that active travel is more attractive, inclusive and safer, which aims to reduce the number of vehicle trips overall. And again, why is active travel seen as a realistic option within an industrial zone where vehicles are required to collect and deliver large and heavy items which could not be carried on bicycle or by foot? Would increasing public travel through an active industrial zone also pose safety risks?
Thank you very much, Mr Stevenson, and thanks for bringing your question today. Neepsend and Kelham are of course a vital part of our regeneration story in this city. And for clarity, I am not anti-car, but I am in favour of increasing options and choice for how we move across our city. In order to ensure that active travel is a more viable choice, we need to make improvements to our infrastructure. As you will know, the aim of the scheme is to encourage more sustainable travel for journeys for existing and planned future housing that can be made by more sustainable modes, especially between Kelham, Neepsend and the city centre, through the provision of high-quality cycling and walking infrastructure, public realm improvements and bus priority measures. Additional loading and waiting restrictions, which still allow loading and unloading, should help reduce vehicle conflict and potential delays in the area too. The scheme has been designed so that access to all businesses and residential properties by all motor vehicles, including heavy goods vehicles, is still maintained, though in some circumstances, the access route for some drivers may vary. The scheme aims to provide the facilities to enable the local community and visitors to choose a range of transport modes to travel to and from the area. And the design of the scheme is based on providing a cycle route through Kelham and Neepsend that utilises quieter roads. The proposed bus gates and no-through roads help achieve this lower level of traffic. Junction improvements for pedestrians and cyclists will enhance crossing opportunities too. Whilst the aim of the scheme is to encourage sustainable travel, access, parking and loading opportunities will still be maintained for all drivers. In relation to your question about car parking, the Kelham-Neepsend Parking Scheme report includes a recommendation to not only implement the pay and display permit scheme at this stage, but to work with businesses in Neepsend to see how the effects of the originally proposed scheme could be mitigated. The report includes a number of initial suggestions as to how this could be achieved. I have a fuller answer in front of me, but it's my intention to record that in the minutes but also send it out to you. And my commitment is that I would like to meet with you and other businesses over the summer, as we discussed outside, if you're meanable to that. Thank you very much for bringing your question today. That therefore takes us on to our next questioner, which is Matthew Windle. Matthew, you have two minutes to raise your question. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Hello, I'm Matthew Windle. I'm from the Neepsend area. My question today is about the end of Neepsend Road, where you intend to close the road through traffic. I can see that it's going to help with cycle routes and pedestrian crossings and that's the reason why it's been done for pedestrian crossing. But there is a perfectly good cycle route on Peniston Road that everybody already uses, so why do we need another one just further up the road through Neepsend? You say about access to all businesses. We will not have access anymore. No HGVs will be able to get to our company anymore. If they do get there, they'd have to reverse a long way back down the road. This has been lorries every week and it's all to just close the end of our road for a pedestrian crossing, which yes, I agree, needs pedestrian crossings around our area. There is a reason why, because there isn't a big enough island at the end of our road for pedestrians. Now, my question is, why can't we just have a zebra crossing a bit further back down the road and leave the end of Neepsend Road lane open so we can still reuse it? We just need access, which we're not going to get anymore. Our customers can't get access. Any customers that do come to our premises have got to do a detour to get there. So they put in pedestrians in more danger because they're driving further and bin lorries reversing down the road is putting pedestrians and cyclists at risk. Not to mention the parking, taking away the parking from the area. There isn't enough parking as it is.
Thank you, Mr Windle, for your question. As I said to Mr Stevenson, I will provide you with a full answer that also includes some diagrams to help illustrate it. I think you raised an important point about Peniston Road and as someone who cycled Peniston Road to get to Warrill, my workplace, on Friday, I know, appreciate that you say that is perfectly good. I certainly didn't find that when I was cycling and found it quite frightening a point. Officers have provided a detailed answer and it's my understanding that to get controlled pedestrian and cycle facilities across each part of Neepsend Lane and Rutland Road, the end of the southern section of Neepsend Lane needs to be closed. Without doing this, it is not possible under the current layout to provide much-needed facilities for pedestrians, cyclists, now or in the future. There are currently no controlled facilities for pedestrians and cyclists at the Neepsend-Rutland Road junction. To address this, the junction of Neepsend Lane-Rutland Road has been designed to have separate stages within the signal timings for pedestrians and cyclists to safely cross each arm, to create time within the junctions to allow pedestrians and cyclists to cross and still have the junctions operate for limited traffic volumes. We propose to close the end of the southern sections of Neepsend Lane and allow vehicles to travel ahead only on the arms of the junction. Now, I appreciate that the answer that I've just given there is very technical and it's been prepared by council officers. I will endeavour to make sure that you do get a full written answer with diagrams as well. And as I said with Mr Stevenson, I do intend to meet with you over the summer if you're meanable to that, because I think that's how we need to progress in dialogue. Thank you very much for coming today. I very much appreciate it and for taking time out of your busy working day to do so. We really do appreciate that. That therefore takes us on to question number eight, which is from Leanne Marshall. Is Leanne in the audience today? Perhaps Leanne isn't here, but we will endeavour to give...
Leanne, maybe she called. She did say she cancelled.
Well, thank you for providing clarity. We're hearing that sadly, Leanne was not able to join us today. We will make sure that we give a full written answer to Leanne and of course, she'll be welcome to meet with me when I visit local businesses in Neepsend over the summer. Question 11 is from Nazar Roof. Nazar, I believe that you're here today. It's lovely to see you and it's good to see you outside your post office from when I met you last. Nazar, you have two minutes.
Good afternoon all. First of all, thank you, Ben, for coming out and meeting businesses alongside your colleagues within this chamber. The Liberal Democrats have come and seen us now as well, and both Labour councillors and the previous Chair Mazurikbal, who came and gave us some very cast-iron pledges, I would say, as to the future direction of this proposal that we see in front of at the committee today for a decision. We're in a situation, Chair, that we're grateful on one hand for giving us some sort of clarification as to where we stand at the moment, but for any business to run successfully in the city, certainty is one of the key ingredients that's required to make sure the cake rises and doesn't flop. We don't really have that certainty given to us in this report, Ben, and colleagues within the chamber. We believe red lines needs to come off as businesses, needs to come off the table. We've shown in business service that we've done individually and collectively across dentists, NHS doctors in the area that have also given their view and their research on this and the service running at the moment as we speak, red lines is going to be detrimental to businesses. And we'd ask for that certainty to be given by this committee today and go as far as taking it off the table. Business impact assessment, to this day, three years, four, two, three years ago, we stood at Pons Forge and I, after an exchange, we agreed that the council would come out and come and speak to us and have a meaningful discussion with regards to business impact assessments and be carried out to see how businesses actually work on the street. None of that has been given. Furthermore, from a post office perspective, having spoken to customers and some vulnerable users, that needers are going through massively lose out and will lose confidence in coming out to do their essential finances. Is this the direction of flow the council wishes to continue on? And finally, there has been this constantly thrown about by politicians, the issue of clean air and reducing traffic volumes on the roads to protect our future generations. Does the council understand and this committee, how one conclude a hypocritical stance when areas like Burngrie, Firth Park, Northern General Hospital, Dondor and Tinsley, child mortality rates and pollution levels and symptoms related are very fierce? Does the council have these figures for today's meeting? And I'll conclude there, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you to Mr Roof for submitting the question. It is so important that we listen to local residents and businesses when introducing new ways of travel across Sheffield and bring everyone along on the journey. That's why I'm pleased that the latest plans have listened to the thoughts of those in the south west of the city and proposed to adopt a different approach to what was initially proposed by implementing a number of changes at this stage and assessing their impact before any further interventions are potentially considered. The report on today's agenda recommends implementation of bus priority work at or near specific junctions along London Road, Abbeydale Road and Ecclesall Road, including amendments to sections of bus lanes and a system of traffic signal upgrades with buses given priority at junctions. Existing bus lane hours of operation on London Road, Abbeydale Road and Ecclesall Road corridors would be enforced using camera technology. A review of the public transport conditions on these corridors, including an assessment, will be undertaken following the implementation of these works to determine if further bus priority measures are required. Should any further measures be recommended through the review, they will be evaluated and carefully to consider economic equities, environmental and other implications of any proposed changes. And as we will ensure that businesses and residents, of course, remain fully consulted and are part of the conversation and brought round the table. We intend to get people, of course, round that table and have open and honest conversations with people as we move forward in the spirit that I have already established in meeting with residents and businesses on London Road, Abbeydale Road and Ecclesall Road over the past few weeks. As we know, the project aims to assist local residents by providing more reliable and consistent bus services and localised improvements to pedestrianise crossing where feasible, such as on Ecclesall Road and Wussings Road junction. The impact upon parking along both corridors from the proposed measures is limited to the proposed amendments to parking restrictions near some of the proposed junction improvements. Statutory consultation will be required before any amendments to loading and waiting restrictions at or near junctions as part of those promoted in the traffic regulation order. The council and this committee considers that the adverse health impacts of air quality are a key driver in our need to improve our transport system and take action on pollution. The council has taken important decisions like the implementation of a clean air zone to improve air quality, which as the fleet improves across our city in response to the zone, benefits will be delivered in cleaner air across the city, not just in the zone itself. We do remain committed to delivering a clean air path plan for our city. As you have identified, air quality is its worst in some of our poorest areas. This is wrong and needs addressing. I remain committed to doing just that. Thank you very much for your question today. Our next questioner is Mr Graham Rowe. Oh, Mr Rowe. It's good to see you again.
Good afternoon, everybody. Yes, I'm Graham Rowe. I write the blog Tell the Truth Sheffield, so do please look it up. Before I ask my four very short questions, I just want to make a very short statement about this committee. You're going to be discussing climate change very soon. Our oceans are currently five degrees above normal. This isn't just unusual, this is totally unprecedented. Our whole sea life ecoculture is completely threatened, as is our food supply. We've got temperatures in Spain above 40 degrees, where lots of our food comes from. Crops there are threatened. We are in very, very dangerous times and we are still not doing nearly enough on climate change. I know your report says we need billions to do what we need to do in Sheffield, that's true, but there are lots of things you can be doing and I really urge you to get on with them because we've run out of time. So my four questions are: Number one, how do we meet our net zero target by 2030 unless we give buses and active travel priority over cars? Secondly, why is Ecclesall Road among the most dangerous roads in Europe and what can be done to make it safer? Thirdly, is there any evidence, empirical or otherwise, that enforcement of parking restrictions has a negative impact on businesses? And fourthly, is there any evidence that enforcement of parking restrictions has a positive impact on businesses? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Rowe, for your question. Our decarbonisation roadmap on the way we travel is one of the main items on today's agenda. This sets out a significant number of objectives that will influence our approach and actions that we have identified for the delivery over the next two to three years. The evidence, of course, is clear that to achieve net zero, public transport and active travel needs to increase very significantly in order to give more viable choices, in order to reduce the reliance on car travel and to free up road space for people who have no option but to drive. Proposed actions will involve providing better infrastructure for active travel and public transport, which our commitment, committed and future programmes of work will need to deliver. We also need to ensure that progressively all remaining motor vehicles transition to EV or zero emission technology. The number of road traffic collisions that have occurred on the A625 Ecclesall Road corridor mean that it is considered amongst the worst route in the country. A total of 27A roads have been identified by the Department for Transport for improvement because of the number of fatal and serious injury collisions occurring. We are currently investigating a range of potential interventions to improve the safety of the route, which we will undertake engagement and consultation on later this year. We have secured additional funding for the Department of Transport and we have been allocated 1.425 million to deliver the project. The effective management of curbside space is recognised as having many benefits and no matter what yellow line, waiting or loading restrictions, parking places, bus lanes or other measures that there are in place, they are only as effective as the adherence is to them. Unfortunately, we know that people don't always abide by the rules and the need for enforcement of restrictions is therefore essential. Thank you very much, Mr Rowe, for coming and bringing your question to the committee today. Our next question is from James Martin. Is James in the room today? Thank you very much, James, if you could come to the microphone.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Howard will ask one of the questions and I'll follow on with the other two, if that's okay.
So, thank you, Chair. How does the current policy ensure that people with dementia are automatically issued a student's bus pass? Or why has Sheffield City Council gone against the guidance from the government? I've spent, I've been living with dementia for six and a half years and I've spent five and a half of those years fighting to attain my rights, to attain the things that I should get. You know, I can't get council tax reduction. I've had a bus pass the last two years, I've been turned down this year. The Joyce Johnson said that people with dementia can get a blue badge, but it's under the discretionary criteria. Why do people with dementia and other disabilities have to keep fighting for the things that they're entitled to?
So, in view of the difficulties of achieving renewal of a pass where clearly it has been deemed a worthy case for issue, is the difficulty and refusal recently due to issues that have happened because of SEC's decision to reduce budgets in this area? And also, will the council work with SIMCA and so Travel South Yorkshire to look at getting five-year passes to reduce the amount of time spent on administration and reapplication so people can get on with living their lives more easily and work around their disabilities? Thank you.
Thank you for your question today, which I will also, I will answer parts now, but also give additional information in the next, in response to the next questioner. We must always, of course, adhere to guidance, but we need to understand where this has not been met and need to ensure that our response as a council is compassionate. I, of course, would greatly welcome a further conversation with Disability Sheffield to understand these concerns much more fully. My understanding is that the progressing of passes is purely based on eligibility, but I do need to understand more from Disability Sheffield and those people with lived experience of this particular issue. Regarding your third question on ensuring that five-year passes covered by the evidence submitted are issued directly to Travel South Yorkshire so that the Sheffield City Council administration can be redeployed to other areas of the backlog, such as blue badge issuing. That is a response that has been provided to me by council officers. However, I do appreciate the need to meet with you and fully understand your concerns because I think it's very important and I'm sure that members would agree with me here today, that we do listen to you and that we do take action accordingly. So thank you very much for bringing your question. I'll hope to schedule a meeting with you this summer in order to be able to discuss it more further. And I hope to be able to provide a little more clarity with the next questioner, who is also on a similar theme, I believe. Thank you. Our next questioner is from Oliver Vigali.
So these questions have been written by members of the Sheffield branch of ACOR Union. They relate to the disabled person's travel pass application, specifically the process of applying to the council for a letter of entitlement for the pass.
So this question is from Aidan. My mother-in-law is absolutely sick of the hoops that disabled people are forced to jump through every day, whether it's PIP, getting disabled access in certain locations or applying for a bus pass. Could you make it, you could make it so much easier with so little effort, will you? This question is from Kit D. Has this process been deliberately made difficult for disabled people to gatekeep the passes? This question is from Kit S. How much council time is spent renewing bus passes each year? How could this time be better spent? It seems to me that the council time spent on renewing bus passes each year could be put to much better use. These questions are from Liv. Why is there a difference in the level of bus passes for different illnesses? Who determines these? Do you think it is fair that people with chronic illnesses have to reprove their disability to you every year? And how do you think the disabled community of Sheffield should commute to the local community?
Have any of the committee members had to go through the process of applying for a pass themselves? Jack asks, what is the logic behind issuing passes for long-term disabilities for only one year? This is weaponised incompetence. Many of the people who need this service will find the bloated process of application hostile. Emily asks, who is responsible for decisions related to the disabled bus pass application process? Do you think the current application process is accessible for those who need it? It seems to exclude those with long-term disabilities. And Oliver asks, what are the difficulties associated with removing barriers to accessible public transport for disabled people by means of making the application process easier and providing a five-year bus pass for people with long-term conditions?
Thank you very much for your question on this important topic and the quotes that you provided are very enlightening about people's lived experience. Clearly, the barriers that disabled people face in Sheffield are unacceptable and we need to listen to those with lived experience in our city. In advance of this meeting, I did get in touch with ACOR, who I understand are organising on this issue to express my desire to work with you on these matters. I'd like to thank you for raising these issues, which show the importance of citizens coming together to build a better future. I've asked officers to investigate the issue more fully and would value a meeting with you and other ACOR members. In preparing for this meeting, council officers have made me aware that we follow Department for Transport and South Yorkshire Mural guidance around what we can accept as evidence for citizens, who are not classified as being automatically eligible, typically through a qualifying benefit. I'm informed that in doing so, we have to follow DFT guidance and invite reapplication. We try and make applications as straightforward as possible, but officers tell me that they must follow central government guidelines around eligibility. With regard to the comments from Mr Cassidy, I'm of course really sorry to hear of your concerns and that of your mother-in-law and share your anger about government's actions, including on PIP, which make it so hard for so many citizens in Sheffield and across our country. Sheffield City Council have delegated a duty to look at eligibility, but again, this is based on DFT guidance. It's important to say that citizens can apply using a variety of channels, such as face-to-face as well as online, but officers are more than happy to look at any issues that citizens may face around accessibility. I am keen for more meetings to occur and know that members of this committee will agree with me. Where we can, we do issue passes for five years and I'm informed that it is only done so under specific conditions. And an example that council officers gave to me of this was if a citizen applied due to epilepsy, according to the DVLA, if they are seizure-free for a certain length of time, customers can apply for their licence back, so would therefore not qualify. Again, this is what we have to do based upon the DFE criteria, but we are always happy to have further discretion with citizens to offer support and/or advice as to other ways of accessing, such as PIP, et cetera. I'd like to thank you for your question today and I'd like to endeavour to work with you over the summer and hear more about your concerns to find a solution, working with our officers and also working with the Mural Combined Authority. I can hear, see an indication from councillor Campbell-Pew to speak. Councillor Campbell-Pew?
Thank you. Yeah, I just think there was a direct question there from the questioners to members of the committee as to whether we have had direct experience. Myself, I don't have direct experience of having to make those pleas on behalf of myself, but I do on behalf of other members of my family. And it's an undignified and demeaning process. And I think that you're right, that there is a gatekeeping element, there's an element of rationing out. And these are systems that are put in place by a national government who seem to have the approach that disabled people should quite frankly just disappear, wither and die and be denied basic rights and dignity, and that is not acceptable. My experiences with my family have been of applying for benefits from national government departments. And so I would hate to feel that people are having similar experiences when applying for things from our local authority. So I think we should be making a commitment. I'm glad that councillor Miskel has made that commitment. I'm glad that councillor Miskell has made that commitment to have meetings with yourselves and with other disabled people's groups across the city. Because if there's anything that we can do to improve our processes, that, that we should be making an absolute commitment to, to do so. Because I wouldn't want people in the city to go through the same things that my family have had to do when we've been pleading for the basic necessities for members of my family to national government. Thank you.
Councillor Barker?
Sorry, I'd just like to very briefly add to that. On top of all the difficulties that you, yourselves and Craig's outline in, in actually finding you qualified, I recently had the experience of helping someone try and renew a disabled bus pass. And the renewal process online was just impenetrable. You couldn't even upload a document such as Word, it wouldn't accept Word or PDF documents. And in the end I had to go into a rundle gate and they were wonderful, really helpful. But you said, yeah, everybody has these problems. Well, actually people shouldn't have those problems, that should be a simple process, just renew online. And it just added to it. So I think that also needs to be taken into account when, when you're looking at improving things. I just found it appalling.
Thank you very much, councillor Barker. And thank you very much for coming in today, I very much appreciate it. Our time is, of course, drawing to a close with regards to this section for public questions and petitions, but we do have some additional ones that I'd like us to get through. Chris Broome is our next, our next questioner. Chris?
Sorry, since the climate emergency was declared in 2019, the city clearly hasn't managed to get close to achieving the large year-on-year emissions reductions necessary to address it and avoid climate chaos. Can I suggest it's time for councillors just to be very explicit now that the main, that this is the main reason we simply have to reduce car use in our city? Where this involves difficult decisions, of course you've got to make every effort to support anyone or any party that's adversely affected. But please don't let that unduly delay a shift to more sustainable forms of transport, which will ultimately bring benefits for everyone.
Thank you very much, Mr Broome, for your question. Our decarbonisation roadmap on the way we travel, of course, is one of the main items on today's agenda. And we've explained to previous questioners that this sets out a significant number of objectives that will influence our approach and actions that be identified for delivery over the next two to three years. We know that the evidence is clear that to achieve net zero, to achieve zero emissions, public transport and active travel need to increase very significantly. And that is to help us to reduce the reliance on car travel and to free up road space for people who have no other option to drive. Proposed actions will involve providing better infrastructure for active travel and public transport, which are committed in future programmes of work we'll need to deliver. We also need to ensure that progressively all remaining motor vehicles transition to EV or zero emission technology as well. Thank you very much for your question today. Okay, our next questioner is Sam Wakelin. And I understand that Ruth Hubbard will be reading out Sam's question.
Thank you. Apologies for my voice, I'm just getting over a cold. If Sheffield is to reduce car traffic significantly, should we stop increasing capacity for cars? The council's Arab Climate Report showed a need to reduce car traffic significantly, but this is hard to spot on the roadmap. For example, should traffic creation schemes like Broadfield Road Junction be stopped? As well as undermining pedestrian access at the junction, this scheme is designed to increase the 97% of general traffic on that route, which is not buses as much as improving bus times, which will mean adding noise, danger and pollution on the road immediately past the most polluted school in Sheffield. Do you want to pick me to ask mine as well?
You're more than welcome to, Ruth.
My question's also about the London Road, Broadfield Road improvements specifically currently underway. The scheme appears to go back to 2017. And in all the papers back to then, I can find only one real reference to air quality in the original bid to government. This claims air quality impact will be neutral, though this appears to be based on that more traffic but less congestion trade-off, which I think it's fair to say is quite a dubious assumption. 2017 is a long time ago and a lot has happened with the scheme, including revisions. In the updated plans, there appears to be no reference to air quality impacts. Nor have I found any reference to any discussions with Lowfield Primary School that lies adjacent to the scheme. I must say, I was actually quite surprised at all this very scant attention to air quality. And to think this might be how the council is doing its business. What we also now know, of course, is that Lowfield Primary is the school with the worst pollution in Sheffield. In fact, its levels are so high that they are up pretty much exactly the same point at which Tinsley Infants and Juniors was closed. And that's exactly what, of course, some experts have called for in relation to Lowfield too. Lowfield Primary is 97% black and ethnic minority, has a 40% eligibility rate for free school meals. Amongst those 385 small bodies for which for which air pollution is so systemically toxic, there would of course also be a significant proportion of children who have, who have additional physical health vulnerabilities and disabilities. I actually want to ask what on earth is a primary school doing here on this awful polluted section of road with additional traffic generating measures going up in as we speak? But I know there's, and about our duty of care to children, to all children, but particularly our most disadvantaged and vulnerable. But I know there may be lots I'm unaware of here. So can the committee please comment on its thinking and approach? In particular, can you report on what discussions have taken place with Lowfield? Both generally and in respect of being the worst affected school in Sheffield for air quality? And specifically in respect of the current on-site road scheme here? What actions are involved, including monitoring, mitigations and actual reductions? Why does there appear to be little or no attention paid to air quality for this scheme over six years since inception? Did any alarm bells ring on the recent reporting of just how badly Lowfield Primary is affected by pollution? And you agree that an early, seemingly quite casual claim of neutrality six years ago and with no updates in relation to changes since then provides no basis for public confidence?
And thank you very much, Ruth, for your questions. With regards to the question from Mr Wakelin, we will, of course, make sure that there's a full written response provided to Mr Wakelin and that will be recorded in the minutes as well. Moving on to your question, thank you very much for it. Of course, it relates to the scheme at the junction of Broadfield Road and the A61 Chesterfield Road, London Road, which I'll seek to answer now. But in order to answer your very broad question, a further written answer will be following as I'm mindful of the need to give officers time to propose a more comprehensive answer, particularly on those really critical parts about air quality that you talked about. The 2018 National Productivity Investment Fund business case was submitted to the Department for Transport based on reducing existing journey times, improving journey time reliability and reducing congestion by all traffic modes, as well as opening up a development site to accelerate business rate growth. The project currently on site aims to create a high-quality bus route on Chesterfield Road whilst also improving the adjacent parallel well-used direct and largely low-traffic Chief Valley cycle route through an improved crossing at Wallasey Road to complement the investment through active travel funds. As I have said, we'll provide you with a full response to this important issue that you've raised in relation to air quality on this area and the effects of the scheme will have on this and in particular the air quality at Lowfield School, which I know is something that's very close to your heart, but also close to the, the hearts of, of members in this chamber as well. We'll also, of course, make sure that that's reflected in the minutes of the meeting today, which I know is a concern. Thank you for coming today and posing your question. So that therefore concludes our section of business today on public questions and petitions. Thank you very much to members of the public who were able to bring questions and petitions. And we therefore move on to formal decisions which we will be taking today. Item, actually, apologies, I get that wrong. Item six is actually about the Work Programme and it's a report of the Director of Policy and Democratic Engagement. And I believe that I'm going to Amanda for this particular item. Amanda?
Thank you, Chair. So the Work Programme is there for you to consider. We have made some amendments since the last meeting and since discussion with the Chair, Vice-Chair and group spokesperson. And those are on page 15 and it's for your approval today.
Are colleagues happy to approve the Work Programme? I'm seeing no dissent, so therefore the Work Programme has been agreed. Thank you very much, colleagues. That takes us to formal decisions. Item seven. Item seven is about climate decarbonisation route maps. And it's the our council and the way we travel section of this particular item. Just as, as a reminder to colleagues in the room, for, for each of the substantive items on our agenda today, please could I remind everyone of the process that we're going to follow? The officers will be invited to present their report to the committee. This will be followed by questions from members to the officers. Once all the questions have been asked and responses provided, we'll then move on to the discussion. After any discussion has taken place, the recommendations will be moved and seconded and taken to the vote. This will enable us to conduct the business of the meeting smoothly and efficiently. And we'd like to thank you for your cooperation to that. Now, this particular item on the agenda is on pages 27 to 85, the Agenda Pack. And presenting will be Mark Whitworth and I believe potentially William Stewart. Is that correct, Will?
Yes, thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much. Mark and Will, over to you.
Thanks, Chair. I just want to say one or two words of introduction for this item and then I'll hand over to Mark and Tom. I'm Will Stewart, I'm Director of Investment Climate Change and Planning. And obviously climate change, because it's in my job title, falls within my remit. So I'm really, really pleased today to be introducing this item. I think the development of this first series of decarbonisation route maps represents a significant milestone in the development of the council's climate emergency response. This council declared a climate emergency in 2019. Since then, the authorities worked to develop a 10-point plan for decarbonisation. A lot of this work has been referenced in some of the questions that we've heard today and the really import, and the importance of that document and the action that subsequently follows. And these decarbonisation route maps are the next stage in that journey. So the route maps we have before us today have involved a lot of officer time, member time. And I'm really thankful to those members that have given of their time to work through with officers on through dedicated task and finish working groups to develop these decarbonisation route maps. We've also involved colleagues from across the organisation, because we're talking about our council, partners from across the city. And these route maps reflect the conversations that we heard very, very clearly at our climate summit last November, where over 80 organisations that represent our city's involvement in climate action, climate action got together to talk about the, the imminent challenge that we face. We've got a wealth of experience and knowledge and commitment out there in the city. And this is resource that we'll need to tap into in order to make the necessary changes that we need to in order to address the climate challenge. We know that addressing climate change cannot solely be the responsibility of this council. And that's why these route maps hopefully will create a framework for organisations out there in the city to step in alongside us to work on, on the ideas, on the commitment and on the projects that we will need to face one of the biggest challenges of our time. The intention of the route maps will also be to, to coalesce and bring those skills together. So the first two that we have before us are around our organisation and the way we travel, but there will be subsequent route maps that will be evolving over the next year, which will give further detail around other areas of significant climate change. So with that, Chair, I'll hand over to Mark and to Tom to introduce the item. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Thank you, Chair. So today we're presenting to the committee the first tranche of our decarbonisation route maps, which we're seeking approval for the chapters which are covering the introduction, our council and the way we travel. As Will Stewart's outlined in the introduction, the first tranche of this route maps and the three chapters it contains represents a significant milestone, setting out the vision and the specific objectives for achieving net zero by 2030 within each chapter and bringing together actions and activities that need to be carried out by the council over the next two years, as well as introducing actions from key partners who are wishing to commit their contribution in their transition and our transition of the city to net zero. The three chapters which are presented here today for approval are the product, as Will's outlined, of a significant amount of work and involving officers across the organisation, as well as engagement with key partners and stakeholders, and also working with members of elected, with elected members of a task and finish group. As, as Will said, we'd like to take the opportunity to thank everyone who's been involved in the production of these route maps, in the production of these chapters. Now, as one of our earlier members of the public has, has pointed out in their questions, the case for climate action, which is set out in the introduction of the report, is, is very clear. And this is something that everyone across the city has a role to play in terms of minimising harm and also adapting to a changing world and climate. And whilst we may not be currently experiencing the extreme temperatures and the heatwaves that have been affecting continental Europe and other places around the world, we only have to go back 12 months to remember the heatwave that was experienced here and the record-breaking temperatures that we experienced. And along with that, the disruption and the harm that was caused, both locally and, and also regionally, reflecting on some of the wildfires, for example. And I think also to illustrate the point, there's research that's now shown globally that over 60,000 excess deaths were caused during that period. But the report also identifies that there are numerous opportunities and benefits that can be harnessed through taking climate action and that we can help in terms of creating new jobs, better health and wellbeing and protecting nature and green spaces and providing lower energy costs. As Will's outlined, the report focuses on two chapters around our council, where we set out the actions that we're taking in relation to our own organisation and with the overall goal of SEC being net zero by 2030. And the importance of actually leading by example. In the city, we're responsible for 7% of the emissions, which may be considered a relatively small amount, but the role that we take in terms of leader and showing what we can do as an organisation is incredibly important. And the sorts of actions that are included within the plan are around decarbonising our domestic, our non-domestic and commercial buildings and also looking at how we can generate renewable energy and also considering how we look at reducing emissions from our fleet, including looking at our, our grade fleet as well. The way we travel roadmap, as, as, as the Chair has, has already outlined in the response to one of the questions, is a significant series of actions which are identified for delivering over the next two to three years. And in order for the city to achieve net zero, that we have to see significant changes and improvements in terms of public transport and active travel and also reducing reliance on, on private car. And also looking at the opportunities in terms of providing infrastructure for electric vehicle recharging and other zero emission vehicles. So just to, just to conclude the introduction, I think the accompanying report recommends that the committee approve the chapters that are contained within tranche one of the decarbonisation. the committee approve the chapters that are contained within tranche one of the decarbonisation route maps, following which specific actions will then be progressed and undertaken. There's a newly established climate oversight board which will take responsibility for monitoring and progressing those actions and what we envisage is that there'll be reports up to the committee in terms of progress on those two route maps. And then we'll then also be progressing the further route maps, so be working within the organisation and with stakeholders to develop those remaining chapters, focusing initially on energy generation and storage on our homes, by which it's important to clarify that we're referring to citywide housing of all tenures and business in industry. And I think finally, just by taking a phased approach over the development of the route maps, that enables the city and the council to take advantage and account of some of the changes in rapidly changing technology and it also allows us to focus also on delivery. And another point finally is that the documents are intended to be live in that future actions can then be added to these documents depending on all those changes and that would avoid us having to then rewrite the whole document. We can then just amend the action plan and keep that effectively a live, iterative document that keeps up with the pace of change that we need to see in order to deliver our ambitions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark and Will, for introducing this really important paper. And we'll now move into the part of this item where members will have an opportunity to ask questions of officers on this. I'll ask you to indicate if you do have a question and I'll take those in rounds of three. Following this, we'll then move into a discussion about the recommendations if members are interested in making contributions. So I can see that councillor Campbell-Pew, is there any other member, councillor Richard Shaw, councillor Campbell-Pew?
Yes, thank you so much. I think the reports that I have before today have got a good level of detail and I know from working with officers on them that the culmination of a huge amount of work over many years. I have some broader political points which are not part of questions, which I'll contribute later in the debate at your discretion, Chair, but my questions for now are, would it be possible for us to have a report back in the autumn, no more than, say, two pages, that will sum up actions completed relating to climate action that have been completed so far, that are currently underway or that are scheduled for action within this municipal year and also a brief measure of how far those actions will take us towards the scale of the emergency that we are trying to tackle. And my second question, Chair, is I welcome the introduction of the climate oversight board. I appreciate that quite correctly that that is predominantly an officer-led board within this authority. I think it is to be celebrated that the senior leadership from the officer corps is coming directly from the chief executive of the council. I just wondered, do we have a sense of what political leadership or political representation there will be on that oversight board? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Campbell-Pew. I said deny that we were going to take them in rounds of three, but I think because your question had two parts, it might be appropriate to go to Mark now. Mark, are you able to answer councillor Campbell-Pew's questions?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, so thank you very much for the support and the positive words around the report. I think in terms of bringing a report back in the autumn, that's something which we are considering and planning at the moment around bringing an annual report effectively that would set out, as you've identified, the progress that we're making towards our target, the actions that we've completed and look at where we are in terms of that journey towards net zero. So that's something that we are, we're intending to do, so that's definitely something we can bring through here and agree a date with the committee to put that onto your work plan.
Thank you very much, Mark. I think Will would also like to contribute.
Yeah, just coming on, councillor Pew's second question, which is around the role of the climate oversight board. Climate oversight board, I was very, very keen to establish in order to deliver that very, very senior officer accountability amongst, in this organisation. I think it's something that we didn't have before and I think it's something that's already playing dividends in terms of collaborative action, support, accountability across the officer corps in this organisation. But I do take the point that there needs to be mechanisms to allow that board to interact with political leadership. One of the suggestions coming out of the climate oversight board at the moment is around a template so that the board can report through each individual committee against an agreed set of actions that exist within each committee. So we'll be taking forward suggestions on that over the next couple of months and we'll be bringing that back before politicians for their endorsement. And I think the second element is, I think strategy and resources have made it very, very clear as one of the most senior committees within this organisation that reports from the climate oversight board need to end up at that committee also to give senior political oversight. So, you know, I think they're good suggestions, I think they're things that we need to deliver within this organisation and we'll be working on that over the next couple of months.
Thank you very much, Will. I can see councillor Richard Shaw and then of course we'll have councillor Sanga. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. It's a technical question first, I do have a, like councillor Campbell-Pew, more kind of political comment afterwards that I'll come to, but my question really is, yeah, well, thank you for the report and, you know, one who's worked on it and given input to it. I'm glad that this is a live document because I was going to question if, what's before us? Is this it or can we make any suggestions or amendments to it or will we have to wait a year or so if we need to, you know, change something or can we give suggestions now?
Thank you very much, councillor Shaw. Can I also take councillor Sanga's question?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm really welcome that we've got this report here and I think those of you who were on this committee last year when we saw a work plan without this report, you know, pushed for work to be done and for a report to come back to us because we have got climate in our title and as Brian Rowe said in the questions, it is the single most important thing in front of us all of the time. And so I welcome that we're here and I welcome, welcome, welcome the work. So I think a couple of small questions then and let's say I've got lots of comments as well. So the first thing is just in terms of what sort of commitment can we have that the tranche two and tranche three reports will actually come back to us in good time? Because, you know, clearly we've had to work very hard to get these tranche one reports. And the second one, just in terms of how we travel, Sheffield has always relied on buses and buses are a key and it's good to see on page 41 here, the commitment to public transport. How much of this are we in control of our own destiny in terms of decent bus routes and affordable prices? I'm just thinking, yeah, it feels to me, and so it feels to me that so often we've sat here on transport committees in the council managing the decline of public transport. We've got until 2030 to be net zero and that has got to include an increase of people taking active choices, some of which is walking and cycling, but some of which will be zero carbon public transport options. And I'm struggling to see how we're going to get there by 2030 in terms of this roadmap, in terms of the levers that we around this table have got. So I just want to know what more we can do. And I think I'm particularly thinking of communities around Sheffield who do not have much of a bus service, bus service is down to one an hour or less. What commitment can we give them that by 2030 they will have a good zero carbon public transport option? Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Mark and Will, are you able to assist with that? Apologies, Tom as well, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'll come back on some of those. I think just to the first one, in terms of, you know, suggested actions has been highlighted already. We are treating these as live documents. What they try to do at the moment is capture quite clearly those actions that we're committed to delivering over the next two to three years. So there'll be a period beyond that, obviously, that we need to continue this work, but absolutely I think there's an open position for us to have conversations about, you know, doing more. Clearly there will be a need to consider that fully as part of kind of, you know, the discussion and debate on those. But I think there is that opportunity. It's not a closed book. In terms of the other, the questions around the commitment around bringing forward tranches two and three, we are very committed to bringing those forward. I think previously we've reported timelines associated with that and, you know, we are working across the council with colleagues, you know, for example from housing on the housing decarbonisation route maps aligned to the housing strategy that's in development at the moment. So work is ongoing in that space and it does need to come forward. In terms of the how we travel kind of chapter, the question around bus routes, how much is that in our control? Obviously at the moment, we're working in partnership with the South Yorkshire Merrill Combined Authority who have a role around bus kind of tendered services and some role around ticketing, but also in partnership with the existing operators in Sheffield and South Yorkshire who provide most of the services on a commercial basis. And obviously as local authority, we have a key role within the MCA, you know, we are part of the MCA in that decision-making, but also in our role as local highway authority where we can clearly take forward improvements to make our bus networks run more effectively and efficiently with the implementation of changes in provision of bus priority. So at the moment, it is almost a trinity of commitment around a partnership model. At the same time, you'll be aware that the Merrill Combined Authority are taking forward reviews associated with bus franchising, which would see a different operating model introduced, should that be the decisions that are made. And decisions on that will be made within the MCA meetings later on this autumn and in next spring. So at the moment, we have limited levers, but some very important levers, I think is what I'd say. And we also have kind of wider influence in terms of trying to encourage people on to public transport as well. We can make certain aspects better, we can work in partnership to make wider bus priority, so wider bus and public transport networks better, but also influence how people travel across the city is in our locker as well.
Thank you, Tom, and please accept my apology for not introducing you earlier. So that therefore now moves us into the second part of this item where members will have an opportunity to discuss. After that discussion has taken place, the recommendation may be moved and seconded and of course a vote taken. I can see that councillor Gilligan is indicating to speak. Councillor Gilligan?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say I'm really pleased that these route maps are coming to our committee and I look forward to the progress reports on future route maps and updates on the actions that are being taken as a result of this current roadmap. We all know we're facing a climate crisis, we've already been told today and we can see what's happening in Europe. It's really important that as a city, we develop innovative and sometimes challenging ways to reduce our carbon footprint. We can't sit back and do nothing. The cost of inactivity, as Sir Nicholas Stern said in 2006, will be much greater than the cost of taking action now. And this isn't only economically, it's socially as well. The roadmap, the way we travel, highlights the urgency of this agenda for travel. It says that we need everyone in the city to act. We need more public transport, walking and cycling to reduce our dependency on cars. We therefore do need to support active travel and encourage people to walk and cycle where possible. As a council, we have the power to change our car-centric culture and this plan emphasises the importance of a modal shift in transport. The goal is that by 2030, there will be a 65% reduction in transport-related emissions. Currently, we're facing traffic growth and a 35% increase in journey times. This increases not only carbon emissions but air pollution. I hope this committee will take on board the urgent need for change and be prepared to give their full support to all actions in these road maps and future road maps, something I'm not sure all members of this committee have been doing in the past. We have a responsibility to the citizens of Sheffield to act on climate change. I will also add that on page 37, workplace parking levy is identified as an important demand management strategy. I would like the committee to discuss this at some time soon. It could provide much-needed revenue to support our failing bus service. Nottingham has raised over £1 billion in 10 years. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan-Cubo, for your contribution. Councillor Mizrahi?
Mizrahi, apologies. Thanks very much, everyone who's put this excellent roadmap together. As a council, we've committed to reduce our emissions by 95% and to cut our transport emissions by 65% by 2030. This is only six and a half years away. It's really urgent and the need to address climate change is becoming ever more urgent as we can see. I'm really pleased to have a roadmap designed to help us navigate the actions that we need to take. The roadmap spells out how we can minimise the effects of climate change in our city and taking these actions gives us a really fantastic opportunity to improve public health and wellbeing and also bring a range of other positives, including creating new jobs, improving our relationship with nature, improving road safety and community safety and lowering energy costs. So I'm supporting this roadmap and I hope our colleagues will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mizrahi. Councillor Auckland?
Thank you, Chair. So with other colleagues, I was able to contribute towards the development of this roadmap document and I've got to say to members and anyone else listening that I accept that's what we need to do, those are the sort of actions we need to take to meet our stated objectives. And there needs to be wide engagement by the public, including people who've come and asked us questions today, to consider how exactly we are going to get to net zero by 2030 because it is truly a massive task. It's so massive that not very long ago, with colleagues, I was sort of like thinking, it's not really, we're not going to meet 2030 and the city region has a, the, sorry, the combined authority has a target of 2040, so there's a mismatch there. But I'm sort of like convinced if we don't set our stall out to actually do what we need to do by 2030, we're never going to do it by 2050 or any time soon and there's a real urgency to make changes. What does concern me is this bit about enabling people to make choices not to travel by car. Thing is, personal mobility is a great boon and people want that. I want that. I, guilty partisan, quite a bit these days, that one. And a lot of people who are on public transport would rather have the choice of personal mobility if they could afford it. So it's a bit of a false thing to me to say people are not choosing to travel because they're forced to get in a car. And I can't see any way the elephant in the room is saying to ourselves and to the public, to voters particularly, that actually we've got to get out of these habits of making that choice and make another choice. And over all the years I've been interested in transport, colleagues on the council know I've been interested in that subject for a long time. Buses and Graves Park, I'm often told are my two hobby horses, but I think it's absolutely the case, the answer to most urban transport problems and the climate change problems we face is a bus. It's a lower zero emission, affordable, frequent and reliable service, probably free in due course, but certainly no more than the marginal cost of getting in a motor vehicle. And it's got to be well-connected, it's got to be comprehensive and it's got to interconnect so you get over people's objection to having to change because people who say they've used the bus more are generalised, but really they'd say they'd use it more if it was more convenient. They tend to mean it went past their door and took them to exactly where they wanted to go in and move and we've got to integrate, you know, let me put in a plea for our European friends. You go in many cities, world-leading cities with very high standards of living, Vienna is a classic, but most European cities, the buses, the local trains, the train- is a classic, but most European cities, the buses, the local trains, the trams, the intercity services, they all connect. And for urban transport, you just need one ticket. You don't have to worry about how many journeys you're making and stuff like that, you just go and get the ticket. If the thing that you want to get on is going in the direction you want to go, you get on it, you stick on it, and then when you need something else, a tram, or even in some cities, a boat, you just get off the tram and get on a boat. And, I mean, we had a bit of briefing with Oliver, and I think Oliver Copard, the regional mayor, I think he does want to improve public transport, but, you know, we are in a pretty difficult, difficult place, aren't we, at the moment? And that is going to include investment. Now, for me, that doesn't include workplace charging levy, because I don't think it will work, I don't think it's a right move in Sheffield. But it does need some thought about how it's going to be paid for, for sure, because it's not going to pay for itself on day one. It won't be sufficient just to franchise the current level of service, because the current level of service is about to get worse, not better. End of rant, Chair.
Well, not a rant at all. Thank you, councillor Auckland, for your years of banging the drum for good quality buses. Councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Chair. So, yes, so just to prove I've read the document, I've taken issue, or I want to question part of the second paragraph on page 38 of the report, which is page 74 of the pack, which reads, quote, Sheffield also has the added challenge of being a notoriously hilly city, meaning we cannot simply replicate the active travel, active transport network levels seen in London or the Netherlands or other flatter areas. Now, the reason I take issue with that is because it could be interpreted, basically as watering down our previously stated ambitions for promoting active travel, walking, wheeling, cycling, within Sheffield, simply because it's hilly at London or the Netherlands. It's a sentiment often here, within the council chamber, or from members of the public whenever active travel comes up. And I question it from both a kind of historic and technical perspective. So from a historic view, in the 1950s in Sheffield, around 20% or so of journeys were bicycle, compared to 2% today. The Netherlands, famed for being cycling-friendly, wasn't always a good place to cycle. The Dutch loved their cars as much as anyone. And in the 70s, you look at pictures of Amsterdam, and they're like indistinguishable from the clogged roads of Sheffield of today. And to the extent that the Netherlands in 1970 had twice as many road fatalities as Britain in that year, so many that the Stoop van Kindermoord, Stop the Child Murders movement was launched to lobby politicians to make roads safer for children. Sheffield has its, you know, similar problems today with regards to road deaths, as we have twice the child fatality rate than Manchester, and the only core city over the past decade where that fatality rate has increased. Netherlands, despite being hailed as a cycling paradise today, still has a lower share of journeys bicycle than Britain did in 1963. So that's the historical purpose. So historically, we have done much better in the past, and we can do much better. From a technical point of view, bicycles are much lighter and have a better range of gears, especially like mountain bikes, e-bikes, e-cargo bikes have become more common and more affordable. The hills of Sheffield can actually be viewed as a boon for cycling, as it actually makes it much easier to get in from the outskirts of town into the city centre than if it were, you know, much, much flatter. And, you know, Sheffield might have seven or eight hills, but unless you get lost, you're only going to be going up and down one or two of them at most. You know, today, it took me 25 minutes to get from, you know, Meadowhead, right on the border of Sheffield, to the town hall, and it only took me 25 minutes to get in, although it would take me an extra 10 minutes to get home because of, you know, in this case, the one hill. The main issue that, you know, hills present is that people and bikes will be moving more relatively slowly than general traffic. And, you know, and often that pits them against, you know, risking the lack of patience or carelessness from an unfortunate minority of drivers. And that's where segregated cycle lanes, you know, uphill especially, would help promote safety. So my point is, Chair, is that the hills of Sheffield, there's not an excuse to be less ambitious for active travel, but justification to demand better and demand more for our city. It's not, it's leadership that matters, not geography. So I would like to actually propose that we amend the paragraph to remove the words that read, quote, meaning we cannot simply replicate the active transport network levels seen in London or the Netherlands and other flatter areas, comma, end quotes, from that paragraph. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Shaw. Thanks also for attending the cycle forum, and I know that you do raise these issues very regularly, so thank you. You made a proposal there for an amendment to the report. I'm just going to turn to the officers for some guidance on that. Could you just outline again, councillor Shaw, what particular page that was for us?
Thank you, Chair. So this is why I asked earlier whether it was still open to amendments. So it's on page 38, which is page 74 of the pack, and it's the second paragraph, well, the second sentence of the second paragraph. And the current sentence reads, Sheffield also has the added challenge of being a notoriously hilly city, comma, meaning we cannot simply replicate the active transport networks, let active transport network levels seen in London or the Netherlands and other flattered areas, comma, but journeys taken on foot or by bikes and other people-powered wheels need to and can very significantly increase. So my proposal is to remove that middle section of that sentence that reads, meaning we cannot simply replicate active transport network levels seen in London or Netherlands or the flattered areas.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. I'll turn to council officers, Pegg Smith and Whitworth, for some guidance on that and your view.
I think we'd be comfortable to remove that section of the report, amend the wording accordingly. I don't think it kind of affects the kind of principles that we'll be working to.
Just ask for further clarification. Thank you very much for that, very reasonable suggestion from Legale Governance, Robert.
Thank you, Chair. So officers have advised that this doesn't unbalance or detract from the language and intentions of the document. Unless there's an appetite to debate this, it might just be that the committee notes that officers will remove that document.
Do I therefore see agreement amongst committee members that we note that officers will make that amendment that is so diligently being spotted by one of our colleagues? Thank you, I see many nods. Thank you very much for that. Councillor Gamble-Pew, you indicated that you'd like to speak.
Yes, thank you. So for all that, when I see this report in front of us, I feel twinges of optimism and hope, I also feel twinges of panic and also of déjà vu, because as we've heard from questioners today, we know that time is running out, and this is an emergency. We need to move quicker, and we need to move with greater scale than we are doing at the minute. And it's great that we've got these route maps before us today, but going back into the kind of political prehistory of this topic, well, from my point of view, I doubt, no doubt councillor Sangha will take us right back to the Cretaceous period. But from my point of view, going back to 2015, we had the Green Commission. The Green Commission brought together key stakeholders who all agreed on the key things that needed to happen in Sheffield. People applauded it, it was marvellous. After that, people said, sadly, the Green Commission didn't produce the strategy that could be implemented to bring those in. So then we had the Green City Strategy. Born out of the Green City Strategy, which first set the goals to, for net zero, we had the Green City Partnership around about the same time that the council declared the climate emergency. Then, we commissioned Arup, who wrote another strategy called The Pathways to Zero Carbon. From that, we had the 10-point plan for climate action, and now we've got the first of a number of route maps. So we've had the commission, we've had the strategy, we've had the declaration, we've had the partnership, and now we've got the pathway, and we've got the plan, and now we've got some of, but not all of, the maps. But actually, what we really need, and why I'm asked the question about getting a report back on action, what we really need is more action. We need more things happening in the local authority and across the city that will actually reduce our reliance on carbon and reduce our emissions. 2030 is, I, my notes, I've put seven years, but actually, I think more accurately, six and a half years was mentioned. So we need to move more quickly. I have to say, I love councillor Shaw's positivity that Sheffield's hilly topography means that at least some of the time cyclists here will get an easy ride. That is a kind of persuasive thought that we need to get people to change their behaviour. Similarly, we heard from councillor Miskell earlier in the public questions, that Labour is committed in this council to supporting options to enable people to have choices, to travel without reliance on cars. That is attractive. And I have to say, we need to be pulling together on this, and I do have to say to my Green Party colleagues that sometimes the Green Party's statements are coming across as being a bit intent on car bashing. And actually, what we need to do in this, we need to be persuading people across the city to travel with us, both to kind of come with us on our policy intent, and also to travel with us on the buses, which we want to kind of increase in the city. So I think it's about positive behaviour change, taking people with us, focusing on what the barriers are, and then looking at creative, innovative solutions to overcome them. And innovative solutions may well include, if we have a discussion and we find that it is the correct thing to do, some of the things that are being proposed by the Green Party, but we can't just keep bashing on about the same pet projects. We need to look, innovation doesn't just mean repeating the same thing, car, workplace parking levy, every time we have the debate. That isn't innovation, that's just banging the drum, the same drum, time and time again. What I did also want to say is that I've heard from councillor Auckland today and other times previously, this sort of question about, we're so close to 2030, do we need to scrap that and move to 2040, and then that's the slippery slope to 2050 and nether, nether, nether land? I don't think we can afford to abandon our commitment to 2030. I don't think that, I hope that's not the Lib Dems' position, but we need to increase that momentum, not to decrease it at this point. And that needs to be action and not just strategising forevermore. Thank you.
Chair, just on a point of clarification.
Thank you very much, councillor Gamble-Pew. Councillor Auckland.
I've been persuaded I was wrong-headed.
Thank you very much, councillor Auckland, for that clarification. Councillor Sangha, I believe, wants to make a contribution.
Yes, Chair, I'm really pleased that we've got this report. But as councillor Gamble-Pew very so eloquently said, we have had a number of reports over the past seven or eight years. Clearly, I could go back earlier, and, yeah, I will do very briefly. I mean, let's start with the issue, the climate challenge, the biodiversity challenge, is the biggest problem facing, challenge facing our civilisation, and has been since it was identified in the mid 80s from science that went back to the 1890s. So we have chosen as a society to push it away for 35 years. And that's not a Sheffield City Council decision, that's a worldwide decision, driven by, you know, people in other countries as much as the leadership of this country. But, I mean, clearly, we are, we have a leadership role in this, and the council has a leadership role. And it is deeply frustrating. I moved a notice of motion back in, you know, back in my first couple of years on the council in the early 90s, talking about the need to make large changes in terms of the challenge that we were facing. And it's just so frustrating that it's taken so long. I remember when Al Gore came to the city with his inconvenient truth, that was 2007. I know when I had the portfolio in 1112, trying to get any grip on what the figures were in terms of what we, the carbon we were emitting from departments was really hard. And it was very hard to move away from individual offices in silos to getting the strategic leadership. And that has been the challenge. And I think what we've now heard today from Will Stewart is that we've got the chief executive prepared to have this climate oversight board, it's going to be on any strategic policy document that the council produces. So it's not just this committee, it is the council, but it's also the city. I was there, I was there at the event at St Mary's last autumn, and we clearly need to work with our partners. I mean, both Sheffield University and Sheffield-Hallam University have taken major changes to the way they work in terms of the way they've changed their courses, the way they've changed their focus of research, so that the climate challenge is top of both of their agendas. I know our colleagues in the NHS are making changes, but we have to broaden it, and we have to show leadership. Somehow, we have to stay optimistic, and, you know, other colleagues are absolutely right. The challenge in all of this is to keep positive, to say that the changes we're making, whether that's bringing in a new electric bus or supporting a particular cycle, these small changes are positive and they're in the right direction. We have to keep that positivity because the challenge ahead of us is too great. And in terms of what my colleague struggles with in terms of dates, I've been very keen to, in the last 10 years, to keep the 2030 date, because 2050 is always somebody else's problem. The government's climate committee a few weeks ago showed that they were missing most of their 2050 targets, and that's because nobody in any managerial leadership position cares about 2050, they care about next week, or next year, or a five-year plan. Nobody cares about 2050. So, you know, certainly on the South Yorkshire Pension Authority, we moved 2030. After all, four districts in South Yorkshire moved the 2030 target, so surprised that the Merrill Authority has been the odd one out at 2040, because the rest of us have kept 2030. It means that we will make changes, it will mean we treat this issue with the urgency it requires. It's a huge change for all of us. We're all going to have to do it, we're all going to have to make lots of changes, but we're going to have to show leadership and bring people with us in the choices they make. But there will be positives, you know, there can be lots of positives. I talked about the universities, that there are, you know, there's opportunities in terms of technology, in terms of new manufacturing, there can be new jobs. So in all the changes and all the challenges, there can also be positives. And so with that, I really want to welcome the fact that we've got some route maps, but I'm clearly, you know, I like detail as well, I like to see what the changes, what the real things we're going to do differently. And transport is a big one, but I'm very much looking forward to the changes we need to make in terms of housing, because I think that, I'm looking forward to the challenges, not just in terms of our own stock, but the homes that we all live in and everybody in Sheffield will live in now and into the future. So welcome the work we've done, but want to see real change, and we all should keep this 2030 target in front of us, because it keeps us all honest, and it forces us to keep this at the top of our agenda. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Sangha. Councillor Mizrahi.
Thank you. Just going back to the roadmap report, a small amendment again, if I could. We already know that Sheffield has terrible collision statistics, and we also know that road safety is a really important part of getting people road safety is a really important part of getting people to make a mode shift. I noticed in the report that collisions are described as accidents, and I ask that this word accident is replaced with collisions or crashes throughout the report, because accident implies that nothing can be done about these incidents, and that no one and nothing is responsible for any outcome. Many of these crashes, as we know, result in serious injury and death, and we can take actions to reduce these incidents.
I would agree with the point that councillor Merserow makes. Can I just ask officers whether they're in agreement with the proposed course of action?
Thanks, Chair. Yes, we do try and use collision, so I'm more than happy for that amendment to be included as well.
So, if the committee is content, we'll note that officers will make those amendments to the report. I can see agreement. Thank you very much, councillor Merserow, for making that point as well, it was very well spotted. So, that therefore takes us into the final part of this item where we look at the recommendations. The recommendation of this particular item is on page twenty-eight of the report, and it's that the Transport Regeneration Climate Policy Committee approves the chapters contained within Tranche One, Decarbonisation Route Map, Appendix One to this report. Do I see someone who would be prepared to formally move the item, councillor Gambler-Pew, formally move the item, anyone who would be prepared to formally second the item, councillor Sanga, I do see that as well. Thank you very much. Therefore, after our discussion, I would like to see whether any member wishes to raise discontent with the item, or whether we're all happy to simply move forward and accept the recommendations of this report. I can see everyone in agreement, thank you. That has therefore been passed unanimously. And thank you very much to Mark, to Tom, and for Will for presenting this report, and for the team of officers that Mark leads, bringing this report to us today. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. That therefore takes us to item eight, which is the Connecting Sheffield South West Bus Corridor item, which is on page eighty-seven to two hundred and forty-one of the agenda pack. And the presenting officer, I believe, is going to be Tom Finnigan-Smith. Thank you, Tom, very much appreciated. As with the other item, we are going to hear from Tom, and then we will have an opportunity to ask questions, and then we'll move into a discussion amongst members. Tom, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So, committee members, I'm sure will be aware that the council have been considering potential improvements to the bus corridors along Ecclesall Road and Abbeydale Road-London Road. This report is to advise committee of the recommended approach to taking forward the implementation of improvement scheme. Providing an improved bus and public transport network in Sheffield is an integral part of our current transport strategy, and we've just heard and considered the way we travel decarbonisation route map. As highway authority, the city council has the ability to promote measures to provide priority to buses over general traffic, to enhance reliability, reduce journey times, and improve bus speeds. That is all critical, and research shows that those, improving those aspects are critical to encouraging people towards public transport and getting that mode shift towards sustainable travel, which is going to be crucial in managing congestion, improving air quality, tackling carbon reduction, and supporting our ambitions for sustainable growth in the city. We've undertaken a consultation on a range of traffic management proposals, and that was undertaken in late twenty twenty-one and through to the start of twenty twenty-two. Over sixteen thousand properties were contacted, and engagement sessions with key community groups and businesses were undertaken at that point online due to Covid restrictions. Plans of the proposals are included in Appendix A. At the time, they were shared online through our Connecting Sheffield website, which was also the portal for people to give us their views. At the time, we also asked people to give us their views on initial ideas for twelve-hour bus lane operation and better enforcement of restrictions, including the potential for red routes. The consultation is outlined at three point two in the report, but in summary, we got three thousand six hundred and eighty responses to the consultation, and the depth of information we've had from that has been really significant. The summary and full consultation reports are included in Appendix B and C, where the responses are disaggregated into their key themes. We also received seven petitions, and those were submitted opposing changes to the bus lane out of operation and/or opposing red routes. A summary of those petitions is attached in Appendix D to the report. Having developed, further developed the traffic management proposals that are summarised in some detail from paragraph one point seven onwards, which includes junction improvements, minor changes to sections of bus lanes, pedestrian crossing improvements, and traffic signal upgrades. Given that there were generally few concerns raised with these measures, and they are now in a more developed position, we now propose to move these to implementation. That will start with a statutory consultation for the traffic regulation orders required to implement these measures, and we will now start that, and we expect to commence that in August. Should there be objections to those advertised orders, they will be brought back for the Transport Regeneration Climate Committee to consider before moving forward. Just to clarify, I can confirm that neither the twelve-hour bus lanes or red route restrictions are being recommended to committee at this stage, but we will be implementing camera enforcement of the existing bus lanes along both Ecclesall Road and London Road, Abbey Dale Road. As I say, that's the existing bus lanes in place on the existing hours of operation, and that's to target and reduce, hopefully, the illegal parking that is obstructing the flow of buses at the moment, which limits the benefits of our existing measures in place. Overall, we'll be monitoring and reviewing the effectiveness of the scheme we introduce to determine the benefits and the impact of that, but also to evaluate whether we need to do more, so whether additional measures may be needed beyond the schemes that we've moved to implementation. We'll be working with the Mayor or Combined Authority through this review, including through the assessment of any proposed measures that are needed, including the assessment of any impact from those. Obviously, if we are recommending any further measures after that review, we'll bring that back to committee for consideration. The scheme is being funded by the Transforming Cities Fund, that's administered by the Mayor or Combined Authority, will be submitting a final business case to the MCA for remaining project funding for implementation. So, with that summary, we can move to the recommendations, and happy to answer any questions on those.
Thank you very much, Tom, and can I express the committee's thanks as well? This is a hefty piece of work, fifty-eight pages in the main report pack, and a hundred and seventy-eight pages of appendix as well. So, please do convey and pass on our thanks for the work that's been conducted by you and your team. The first part of this particular item will be an opportunity to ask questions of officers, and then we'll move into a debate about it, and finally, about the recommendations, we can discuss the recommendations and move forward. So, do we see any colleagues around the room who are indicating to ask questions? We'll take them in rounds of three if it's appropriate. Councillor Auckland first, councillor Auckland.
Will the camera enforcement be by fixed camera, or by a camera van going by, or a combination of both? And I noted from, I think, one of the MCA's committees, I think it was the last meeting of the Transport Board, a minute that members expressed concern about seven-hour, seven-to-seven twelve-hour bus lanes. And I also see in other documentation at the MCA that they have an objective of seven-to-seven bus lanes, and I'd just like to see if Tom is able to enlighten us about how those two statements might be combined, and particularly, is that a concern from Sheffield, or was that a concern, if he knows, shared across the board or the leadership?
Thank you, councillor Auckland. Councillor Sanga.
Thanks, Chair. I really wanted to pick up some of the public questions, because both Abbeydale Road and Ecclesall Road are known to have lots of independent shops. I just wondered what business impact assessment was carried out before the first decision was taken back in twenty twenty-one, but also, you know, now we're here where we are, just what impact, what business impact assessment's going to be carried out with these changes? And then, you know, how do we work with businesses going forward in terms of the continued work we're going to need to do on these two bus corridors?
Thank you very much, councillor Sanga. Tom, are you able to answer and help us answer some of the questions posed by councillor Auckland and councillor Sanga?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, I'll just take those in order. Camera enforcement, councillor Auckland, we're proposing to implement fixed camera enforcement along the corridor. We are able to enforce via camera technology now existing bus lanes, and we do have a mobile camera on one of the civil enforcement officer vehicles that does go out, that's often used for enforcement outside and around schools, on the no-stopping restrictions, on the keep-clear zigzag markings. But we are proposing that, actually, the most effective way is fixed cameras, because it is there at all times on both corridors, and doesn't require somebody to, a resource of a person being in that vehicle to deploy it. Obviously, what it means in terms of fixed cameras enforcement on the bus lanes, one of the concerns that we've had is that that could just displace illegal parking outside of the bus lanes, but given that the civil enforcement officer capacity can be kind of concentrated down on those two corridors, we will have to have a review as to see whether it does displace traffic and illegal parking as part of the review. In terms of concerns raised at Mayor or Combined Authority meetings around seven-to-seven bus lanes, I probably can't comment on that without understanding the reference that you're making. In terms of whether seven-to-seven bus lanes is captured in any of the regional kind of transport strategies or plans, my understanding is that the Bus Service Improvement Plan that was developed and coordinated by the MCA and submitted to the Department for Transport does reference seven-to-seven bus lanes. I expect that that is on the back of government's National Bus Strategy, I've forgotten the name of it at the moment, that actually set out the ambition to have stronger bus priority measures, including twelve-hour bus lanes. In terms of the kind of economic impact, you know, we are, we do hear what the local businesses are saying, you know, we have heard what they've said through the consultation. I think the majority of the concerns have related to red route restrictions and the twelve-hour bus lanes. The concerns predominantly are around the implications on parking and loading around those business areas. I think one of the things that we've had positive discussions with some local business representatives is trying to outline and explain better what red route restrictions actually mean. It doesn't necessarily mean that parking will be removed throughout the day, that the overarching factor there really is the length of the bus lane restrictions. Red routes can be implemented on corridors where parking is retained in the middle of the day, as it is at the moment on both of those corridors. The red route restrictions allow us to enforce by camera where there aren't bus lanes. So, at the moment, we have powers of it where the bus lanes exist, for the hours that they're in force, but not in adjacent sections of the corridor, and that is the overarching benefit of red routes. But it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, twelve-hour bus lanes go hand in glove with red routes. In terms of, obviously, considering any further measures, you know, as we mentioned in the report, we are committed to looking across a range of factors, the potential impacts, should further measures come forward, and we will be doing that collaboratively with the MCA. We have and we will be looking at kind of other places across the UK in terms of where they've introduced further measures. We'll be looking to see whether any further assessment is needed locally as well, to be able to understand potential implications better before any further recommendations are made on that.
Thank you very much, Tom. Councillor Gilligan-Cubo indicated to speak.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Tom, you were saying that the funding for the South West Bus Corridor is from the Mayor or Authority. I might be wrong now, but I also understood that we receive some extra money because of safety measures along Ecclesall Road, so I kind of have two questions in one here. So, how are these two different pots of money, are they both happening on this scheme, or are they separate, and will there be further things around road safety on Ecclesall Road later? And two is, we're doing some changes now to meet the Mayor Authority's funding scheme, are we fully meeting the scheme? And if we need to do further changes after review, do we still have the funding for that? Thank you.
Tom, are you able to answer councillor Gilligan-Cubo's question? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, in terms of the road safety funding that we've received from the Department for Transport, we are developing measures along Ecclesall Road. The funding is focused on reducing the levels of killed and serious injury collisions that are occurring on that corridor, and we have quite specific criteria and outcomes that that funding is trying to achieve. But the project teams are looking at the Ecclesall Road Bus Priority Scheme, are working closely with, the team promotes the measures as well. So, we're trying to integrate that as much as we can. One of the reasons we want to bring forward these measures is that the different funds do have different timelines, so the delivery and phasing of that is something that we'll be working on closely, and particularly, given that we will be doing additional engagement and consultation on a statutory footing for some of the restrictions for the bus lane changes, we'll be doing engagement in a similar time around the aspirations around the changes from a safety perspective. So, we want to look very carefully, and we'll be having discussions and briefings with the committee about how we may make sure that that happens in an appropriate way, in a clear way as well. So, we are bringing forward those together, and we'll be able to provide you with more details on the programming associated with that. In terms of scheme objectives for the MCA, we will, as I mentioned, be producing a final business case. We have to submit that for approval from the MCA to unlock that funding and draw that down for delivery. We believe that the kind of scheme that we're bringing forward and the measures we're going to move to implement align very well with the outline business case that's already been approved for this scheme, and, you know, we're at the final stages of design at the moment, so we're getting more detailed costings back soon. Clearly, what we'll need to do is we'll need to review that as part of the progression of that business case, to kind of show the value for money of these measures. So, further work to develop that case and take it through the assurance process within the MCA is underway, and we'll be going through that later on in the year.
Thank you very much, Tom, for answering questions from the committee. That then takes us into the second part of this particular item on the Connecting Sheffield South West Bus Corridor, which is an opportunity for members to discuss the item. Do I see... Do I see any members who would like to indicate to discuss or make a contribution on the item? I can see councillor Sanga. Councillor Sanga?
Thank you, Chair, and I'm pleased and relieved that we've got to this point and I am happy to support the recommendations. I just wish we'd got here earlier. I would like to thank my colleagues, particularly councillor Barbara Masters, for all the work that she did and she has done in terms of speaking to residents and businesses on Ecclesall Road. And clearly this, you know, I think this, you know, I, I think, you know, we've been very consistent in terms of our skepticism about twelve, whether twelve hour bus lanes were required, whether red routes allowed businesses to, to, to continue with the, their loading, loading requirements. So I'm very pleased with the scheme we've got now in terms of the changes. I think they will make improvements in terms of tackling some congestion. I think they will make the bus flows, flows better. We have to find a way of using our whole toolkit. We have this engagement toolkit. We need to make sure we use it all of the time and we need to reach out to people who are going to be affected and take them with us. And that's, sometimes it's going to be residents, sometimes it's going to be, be commuters and sometimes it's going to be businesses, sometimes it's going to be all of those people. And I just feel that this was, this was a scheme that came through because the government wanted to do things post Covid. Clearly, there's a congestion problem on these two roads, these two corridors, and I just think the cooperative executive rushed to this and we spent the whole of last year saying, what are we going to do as a committee? And, you know, it's taken until July to come here when, you know, I think we could have probably written this report nine months ago, twelve months ago, and businesses, businesses and local people would have known where we stand and we'd be able to go forward. I'm very happy that the officers have done such a comprehensive piece of work and that we've got something that we can all get behind and support. We need Abidale Road, London Road to be a success and we need Ecclesall Road to be a success. And that's the businesses on there needs to be successful, but also as important transport through routes for lots of people, they've got to be a success. I think with this compromise that we've got here is good. And I thank my colleagues for getting here, but we should have got here earlier and we'd need to think through when we have future schemes, how we get the engagement carried out and how we get the engagement right first time. That doesn't mean we're gonna, that doesn't mean we're going to take everybody with us all of the time. We're clearly going to have to make some decisions where some people don't like it, but we have to take a larger percentage of people with us in terms of the changes we're making and we're, we're, we're putting on them and the differences in choices that we're going, we're going to put before them. So yes, I welcome this, but we should have got here before, got here earlier. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Sanga. I also see councillor Gamble-Pew wishing to make a contribution as well.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think what occurs to me, similar to what councillor Sanga just said, is that we were really hampered here by the circumstances of the consultation at the very beginning of this scheme, not just this scheme, but quite a lot of the other schemes that we've seen coming through our committee in the last eighteen months. And we know that things were different at the point where the initial consultation for these schemes took place. We know that. It was Covid, we accept that. But there was another factor that was different then. It was the pre-committee system where, you know, the bad old days, where we had individual councillors holding the cabinet or executive co-op roles as it was in that year. Where individual councillors in those days were able to hold that executive role and push through their own agendas, regardless as to the balance of the views of other elected councillors and of the public. And so what we know and what we've discussed today is that when you try and do something innovative and you do something new for the first time, you get one chance to get it right and take people with you. And what we've seen in the lifespan of this committee, time and time again, is people being in an absolute panic because people have misunderstood or they haven't, we haven't co-designed these schemes effectively with people and people are having responses that are really based around anxiety and concerns, some of which are very real. I'm re, I'm very, very glad that the current Chair and your predecessors have taken the time out to bring to the committee the opportunity for us to have a pause on some of the more controversial elements of this scheme, which people came to our committee and said they thought would actually cause real significant problems. And I just think, I hope everybody here would agree that whoever it was that held the co-op exec brief when these schemes were initially consulted on, really missed the trick and has really landed us in it because time after time after time, we are struggling to bring people with us on these schemes and it's essential that we do. And we're losing a lot of time and as we've discussed also in this meeting, we haven't got that time because we're in an, we're in a climate emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gamble-Pew. Without any other indications for members to speak, I'll move to the recommendations, which I'll read out. So it is, the recommendations are on page eighty-eight of your agenda pack and it's that the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee endorses the implementation of a series of bus priority works at or near specific junctions along London Road, Abidale Road, Ecclesall Road, including amendments to sections of bus lanes and a system of traffic signal upgrades with buses given priority at junctions. That we note that the head of strategic transport sustainability and infrastructure will promote a traffic regulation order for these measures and statutory consultation will be undertaken with any objections reported to a future TRC policy committee for a final decision. That we endorse that the existing bus lane hours of operation on London Road, Abidale Road and Ecclesall Road corridor will be enforced using camera technology. That we endorse that a further review of the public transport conditions on these corridors, including an assessment following the implementation of these works, to determine if further bus priority measures are required. So those are the recommendations that are set out in front of us. Do I see a proposer who could formally propose those recommendations today? Who will be happy to do so? I can see councillor Sanga and a, someone who could formally second the proposal, councillor Gamble-Pew, I can see as well. Now that therefore moves us on to potentially voting on this measure. If any member wishes to dissent, can I please ask you to raise your hand? So therefore, these measures and the recommendations that this report has therefore been passed unanimously by this committee today. I'd like to thank Tom and his team for putting together this very extensive reports and appendices as well and for colleagues today for having a very detailed discussion and debate and also for those people, members of the public citizens of the city who've taken time out of their busy working days to come along. So thank you. Our next item is item number nine of the, your agenda pack, which is the Kellam and Neepsend Parking Scheme. It's on pages twenty-three to two hundred and twenty-two of your supplementary agenda pack. And the presenting officer will be David Whitley. David?
Thank you, Chair. This report details the consultation response and proposed introduction of the Kellam Island and Neepsend Parking Scheme, reports the receipt of objections and sets out the council's response to the introduction of a parking scheme that, that were proposed to operate seven days a week between the hours of eight o'clock in the morning and eight, eight thirty in the evening throughout the Kellam Island and Neepsend area. And section two point eight and two point nine in the report sets out the case, the case for change or, or the, or the reason for the scheme, including it being named as an area of known parking demand within the twenty eighteen parking strategy, subsequently referenced in the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, sorry, transport strategy. Improving access throughout the area by introducing loading and unloading opportunities for all vehicles, especially larger ones, by removing parking at or near junctions. Accepting that, you know, this land to enable around fifteen hundred houses is included within the local plan up to twenty thirty-nine, and that excludes the west park development, which is currently already on site on the periphery of the scheme. It also aims to improve the likelihood of convenient parking spaces for residents, businesses and visitors and giving them a greater level of priority where appropriate through issuing permits to those property, properties able to apply for them. Finally, the scheme design aims to move away from a two wheels up approach where, where people are parking parts on the footway. And it also facilitates the housing zone nor TCF scheme, improving, including providing adequate widths to provide new cycle route through the area, changes to traffic flow bus gates and moving a bus lane on the approach to bridge houses. These issues are covered in the next agenda items, so I'll just focus on the loading and waiting restrictions for now. The current number of places where people park is around seven hundred and ten, with the scheme having the effect of reducing this to around four hundred and eighty-five, although the numbers do change slightly depending on what assumptions you make around, around the, the size of a, the size of a bay. The proposals lead to a lot of around eighty spaces in Kellam and around two hundred and thirty in, in Neepsend. We've had requests from the local community over a number of years and that includes local members too for a scheme, for introducing a scheme in this area. However, the traffic regulation order consultation led to a total of seven hundred and five people providing feedback. Six hundred and sixty-six responses were priding on the citizens-based survey hosted by the council and the remaining thirty-nine responses were received as emails. Five hundred and fifty-two objections were received, so that's seventy-eight percent, of which three hundred and eighty-one were from residents, businesses and employees, a hundred and fifty-one were from visitors to the area. Overall, twenty-two percent supported the scheme, although there was a greater level of support, it went up to thirty-three percent if you just looked at, if you just looked at Kellam residents and from visitors in the area too, which was about the twenty-six percent. Thus, you know, if you excluded a lot of the comments that came back from businesses or Neepsend, just to be clear, I'm not proposing to exclude the comments that have come back from, you know, from businesses in Kellam or Neepsend. Section three, three ten to three eighteen sets out the main areas of objections and response to them. The three main areas of comments received were about, were about personal affordability. There was a hundred and forty-nine comments that said the costs of permits would be a financial burden and that the proposals are a money-making exercise. These came from residents and employees in the area and, and businesses too. There was comments around the fact that residents and businesses don't feel that they should pay to park in the area or at least the first permit should be free. And the city council's current approach is that the price of permit contributes towards the schemes enforcement, so, you know, so it won't be free. But people would obviously, if they, if they had a permit, would be entitled to park at a much lower rate, or a much lower cost, sorry, than, than if they had to pay the, the pay and display, pay and display levels. It is acknowledged though that costs will be significantly higher for residents who live in no car households in the area if they choose to pay the pay and display rates in the areas all day, all day, every day. A hundred and forty comments were that it was harmful to businesses. A respondent said that the scheme will, will prevent delivery and business vehicles from loading and unloading, will deter customers as one of the areas, attractions to the areas because of it is free to park. There were concerns raised about ability to retain staff and difficulty of businesses who are vans on site for a short period of sites, a short period at the start and end of the day, being serviced, you know, being serviced by premises and then businesses feeling unheard and ignored. There was a request for short stay spaces, you know, not just monetizing the all-day parking problem. I think it's, it's important to note at this point that the scheme has been designed in line with, in line with the, with the council's current parking strategy as of, sorry, parking policy as of, as of twenty eighteen, because a number of residents did also say to us that they would support a scheme, but just not the scheme as it is currently, as it is currently designed. This feedback coupled with the fact that land use is, is quite different between the primarily residential Kellam and primarily business industrial area in Neepsend, has led to one of the recommendations to undertake more work with businesses in Neepsend to understand how the original scheme could be revisited to reduce the impact on them. This work would be undertaken in the next few months with section three point, fourteen point five of the report, including detail of examples of, of, of what this may look like. Several respondents did highlight that they felt that parking in the area was actually people working in the area, you know, rather than people, you know, working in the city centre and walking in, walking in from, from the Kellam-Neepsend area. And obviously, several, several respondents wanted more parking in the area, not, not actually less. The, the final large area of, of feedback was around accessing permits typically relating to car-free developments. We had a hundred and thirty-one comments, you know, that highlighted that the scheme will prevent them from parking on street as they're not entitled to a permit. Section three, fifteen point one of the report sets out the council's response to this issue, while the, while the use of car-free developments and their entitlements permits was confirmed at the, at this committee in, in December twenty-two. However, residents in car-free, residents, you know, do still feel that this, the scheme doesn't, doesn't work for them and the current situation does, with some car-free developments being designated, you know, as, as long as ten to fifteen years or so ago. Residents of car-free developments may be eligible for other types of parking permits though, so for, for example, care of visitors.
Apologies to stop you whilst you're in, in full swing there. I just have to ask the committee because the confines of the constitution, we have now reached our guillotine points, we therefore have to have consent at the committee in order to extend the guillotine by a period of half an hour. I'm minded that it's the Sheffield Grand Prix and many councillors as well as officers may well be planning to attend at five, so I'm not minded to go beyond that point with the consent of the committee. David, apologies for interrupting you.
It's not a problem and I am very nearly finished. So residents in car-free developments may be eligible for other types of parking permit, care of visitors, et cetera, in the usual way according to the relevant criteria. So parking schemes are always controversial and are not supported by a majority through the TRO, TRO consultation, but I hope the report sets out the benefits of the approach to the Kellam Island and Neepsend scheme so that the recommendations, noting additional work proposed with businesses in Neepsend can be supported. I'm happy to take any questions on the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, David, and thank you for your team and your work putting this together. I can see two contributions, three, pretend four. Okay, let me start with councillor Gilligan-Cubo.
Thank you, Chair. Mine's just a quick point of clarification because I don't think I heard what you said. Residents in the car-free schemes who become disabled and may need a vehicle, are there measures that will help them with getting a permit or something? Or is this not possible?
So I, I think, I think.
Okay, David, if we just take rounds of three apologies just for, for, for speed. Councillor Moserow as well?
Thank you. Thank you very much for all your work on this. I know how much work you and your colleagues have done. And it's a very small point. I know that on three point one, five point five, the Little Kellam development, residents can now purchase permits as the original condition has been removed. Am I right in thinking that that means at least forty-nine or fifty residents who may have objected previously might no longer have cause for objections? And I can confirm there's been a lot of consultation on the doorstep, at residents' meetings, meetings with officers, so thank you for all your work, like I said.
Thank you. David, if you're happy to take those two, we have two additional ones after this, so that would be brilliant. Thank you.
Not a problem. In terms of the, in terms of the first question, I don't think there would, there would be access, access to a permit, but obviously through the, you know, through the, the blue badge system. You know, blue badges can, you know, can use our, use base within the scheme without, you know, without time, without time limits, you know, or, or a cost. Appreciate the comments about Little Kellam. Yes, a, a few, I don't think as much as forty-nine, but I'm guessing, you know, that that's the size of the, you know, that's the size of the development. Yes, a number of people will have commented that, that they're not entitled to a permit when they are. A couple of, a couple of residents actually specifically pointed out to us our error in including it as a, as a car-free development in the first place. So yes, you are right, there are a number of people who, who objected, who, who, who may, who may now have a, be more likely to support the scheme, but we have not assumed that they will support the scheme.
Thank you very much, David. Councillor Sanga? I believe, oh, apologies, councillor Shaw? No, my fault. Councillor Auckland, all three of you, thank you very much.
Third time, third time looking, Chair. On page thirty-seven of the pack, three fifteen two. David, you, you make reference to new residents moving in. It's basically about the, the car-free developments, which I think I would probably have voted in favour of at some point when I've been on the planning committee. But a lot of people have said that they knew nothing about this. So, and you made the point about the decision letters. And it's really about. And it's really about fairness to the people involved, in a sense, that I'm coming at this, because I looked at one, which was thirteen oh three, six, three, four, four. So this was a car free development. The decision letter doesn't make any reference to it being car free. It just makes references to plans. And the reporting officer says in their report, it's car free, but there's plenty of free parking on the, on the, on the roads nearby. It won't be a problem. So have you actually checked what was said to people? And don't they have a point if we haven't told them about taking away that at least was discernible if, or by their advising lawyers, that they have a, a legitimate, legitimate concern? Because to me, I'm trying to work out, I don't think they would be in any different position to somebody who'd bought a house in Woodseats. There's no parking outside there. Personally in favour of us coming along and introducing residents parking to controlled parking in Woodseats if we ever get round to it, but they never had parking in the first place, aren't they in a similar position? Second question is, in the back of my mind, I thought we'd got a premium permit parking rate for the city centre out with the standard sort of scheme. And I just wondered if, but I don't think it's two thousand pounds. I don't know if there is any scope in, in that, in that scheme. And I'm, I'm glad you've raised the point about disabilities, because that certainly some, some people have emailed us about that, and that's nice and clear, I thought. The other observation, again, from the car free developments is, a lot of people will be entitled to permits, and they've got garages and, and parking spaces allocated. Just, it'll just cover my comments, Chair, if you indulge me. It's, if I've got a beam up on it about people parking on pavements and blocking roads, it's people with two garages and a modern estate development designed supposedly to keep cars out. And you can't move for cars parked on the pavements. I have some sympathy with people who feel they must have a car and have to do two up on the pavement, so long as there's room for people to get by with a, you know, the buggy or a cycle, I think that's fine, honestly. So I just wonder when you've done your measurements, if you've looked actually at what would facilitate free passage, having regard to our priority for walking and cycling, as opposed to simply stopping people parking a vehicle if that's what they want to do. That's it, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Auckland. David, are you able to help us with that answer?
Yes, so I'll, I'll deal with, I'll deal with those three points. I think in, in, in terms of, in terms of conveyancing, I, I think in three point fifteen point two, we've tried to, you know, we've, we've tried to highlight, although we understand it's a, although we understand it's a frustration, that we, we can't necessarily be, be held, you know, liable for, you know, for what, you know, for what either people who are renting or, or buying through the conveyancing process, you know, you know, have been told, that the current scheme as well, in terms of the text within the report, again, defers back to the, you know, to the entitlement of permits that was confirmed at this committee in December twenty, in December twenty two. So that's, you know, that, that's what we're, that's what we're currently, currently working to. In, in terms of the, in, in terms of the, the city centre rates, are you talking about a premium price for a, for a residential permit? Or was it, or was it actually pay and display parking charges?
I always thought there were a few people in the centre of town who'd got permits at a higher price at one point. I thought at one stage our green colleagues were wanting to reduce it to the standard price, but it might have gone.
I think historically it was related to, it was related to pubs and churches in terms of, in terms of landlords and vicars, so, you know, so the numbers are very, the numbers are very smaller. There was a, there was a slight increase in price relative to other residential permits within, you know, within the, the wider areas around the city centre, but it, it wasn't, it wasn't freely available at a, at a premium price, which I think is the, is the key point to make. And, and just in terms of two up, yes, I was just quickly trying to find it in the, in, in terms of the text that was included in the specific section. We, we were looking at, we were looking at three metres, ensuring that we had three metres where, where we required access for, you know, for emergency services vehicles. We were looking at four point four metres where, where the route was, was likely or actually actively proposed as an active travel route. And that would, that would give, you know, adequate space for a, you know, for a car, you know, to pass a, pass a cyclist safely. So yes, I, I'm apologies for not being able to find the reference, but they are included within, you know, within the document.
I've not always briefed myself, Chair, by the way, but in short, you've looked at that, it's simply about giving road space over to meet the priorities, but not about stopping people necessarily parking.
It's, I, I think it's also about taking, taking an approach that we, that, you know, we, we feel that the footway should be, you know, should, you know, should be for pedestrians. And I think as the report says, we've, we've taken, you know, we've taken quite a lot of, there's been quite a lot of comments about the reduction in terms of the number of places where, you know, where people park, and, and, and a number of people have said, there is a low footfall at the minute. And, and that, and I think I completely accept that. You know, part of what we're looking at doing now, and I stress part of it, is, is planning for, you know, planning for the future in terms of what the area may look like in the future, you know, hence the, hence the reference to the local plan. And it, and it feels more appropriate to, to plan in advance proactively rather than being reactive.
Thank you very much, David. I'm particularly impressed with the very intricate level of knowledge about parking for vicars and publicans as well. That's very niche, but I'm glad to see that they're being catered for as well.
Chair, you didn't, I'm quite.
Councillor Auckland, no doubt, also has that knowledge in his head as well.
And out of my head, Chair.
Okay.
Have you actually looked at what the decision letters say on the car free developments? You've put it in your report that should have been told. Do we know?
So in, we've had many discussions with colleagues in planning, particularly in the run up to last December's report being confirmed around the process and approach that's undertaken. So we, we have had confirmation through those discussions around the approach that has been taken. But I'm more than happy for us to, to kind of look into the issue that you've flagged around that specific development that's come back. But in terms of the condit, some, some car free developments are defined through condition, some are through kind of informatives on those developments. So they, they sometimes come through in different ways. But the, the kind of underlying principle here is the permission was deemed suitable for those developments on the basis that they would be car free. And that is what the, the kind of belt and braces approach of the report last December effectively confirmed, so that when we're taking decisions about who can and can't get a permit through the, the parking process, it, it absolutely dovetails and is a solid policy position.
Thank you, Tom. So much appreciated. Councillor Auckland, I, I'm mindful that we do have another item also to discuss. You're more than welcome to make a further contribution. I don't want to close you down.
That's it.
Thank you, councillor Auckland, and thank you very much to David and Tom for that. Now we would traditionally be moving into discussing the item, but members may not wish to make any further contributions. I've seen no desire for any further contributions. So the recommendations of this particular item on item nine, the Kellam and Neepsend parking scheme, is on page twenty four of your report pack. It's very detailed and extensive, so I will ask that you look at this yourself, but it contains a number of recommendations there. And with that in mind, I'd ask if we all are agreed, and if any member wishes to dissent, please do raise your hand. I can't see any dissent. Therefore, we all are in agreement, and the report therefore passes unanimously and the recommendations are carried. Thank you very much, Andrew, and thank you very much, Tom, for bringing this particular item as well. That moves us on to item number ten, which is a Kellam Neepsend Moving Traffic Report. And again, I think it's Tom Finnegan Smith, but I also think it's Andrew Shearer as well. Hello, Andrew, and it looks like one of your colleagues as well. Can I possibly just ask you to introduce yourselves as well, please?
Yeah, hi, thanks, Chair. Andrew Marwood, Principal Engineer in Strategic Transport.
Thanks, Chair. Andrew Shearer, Transport Planner at the council and the client for this project. Just on a couple of slides, just to provide a bit of background to the scheme on which the T R O's proposed to enable some of the measures that were proposed and to introduce. In terms of Kellam Island, it's become increasingly vibrant in the city residential district and visitor destination. Neepsend's certainly more industrial, though also attracting investment in residential properties as well, and also the significant investment around the Westbar area and around Shells Mall. So in terms of this, this scheme, the proposals will provide a high quality cycling and walking infrastructure between Neepsend, Kellam and the city centre. And alongside this, where possible, we're looking to introduce greening along key streets with high quality planting and sustainable urban drainage. And also goals priority improvements, particularly in the, in the Neepsend area, are proposed to enhance sustainable access to and from the city centre. This scheme's the first of a series of connecting Sheffield schemes which aim to transform travel in Sheffield through high quality walking, cycling and public transport infrastructure. So just, just in terms of the, the slides, this first slide just displays the extent of the proposed scheme, so it's just a, a kind of an overview really. The red line is the cycling pedestrian route which travels from the city centre, which is towards the bottom of the slide, down to, down Tenter Street and Westbar, over the A sixty one, and then through Kellam and Neepsend. And the, the blue line is predominantly where the, the public transport or bus interventions are proposed. If you just move to the next slide, please. This just provides a bit more detail, focuses in on, on one of the areas of the scheme. It's a fairly extensive scheme, turned at the extent of the scheme, and we just wanted to kind of give a bit of a flavour of, of, of the feel for the scheme. This is highlighting high quality segregated cycle routes along with pedestrian improvements for the footways along Tenter Street and around Westbar Roundabout and, and down Westbar as well. That, that's the red lines, which is predominantly the cycle route, and, and the green is high quality planting. We're trying to get a feel similar to the grey to green, which has been introduced on Castle Gate, and it will continue that feel up Tenter Street and then towards the city centre. So alongside these measures, we're also proposing traffic management measures in Kellam and Neepsend to reduce through traffic, and that will also include localised junction improvements for pedestrians and cyclists. Again, bus priority interventions mainly in the Kellam and Neepsend area, and crossings, particularly where they're required on the A sixty one and at the Rutland Road and Neepsend Lane junction. If you just flick on to the next one, please. So this just really just illustrates the kind of the quality that we're aspiring to for these types of schemes with good quality, high quality planting incorporated into the, the sustainable travel infrastructure that we're proposing, so it just kind of gives an idea of, of what we're aiming for. So in terms of the T R O, in order to kind of fully implement this scheme, there's, there's a T R O that's been, been required or is required. And this was advertised back in February of, of this year. There were fifty two objections to the T R O, but we also had some, some people positive towards the scheme, so seven people were positive towards the proposals and six were In terms of the objections, fairly wide, wide ranging. They're detailed in the report and in appendix B, but we've broken them down into eight main categories, which include access or access, impact on businesses, parking, the scale of the scheme, concerns around congestion, concerns around increased travel distance, that the scheme's not necessary, and safety implications. For the purposes of today, just to focus on the kind of the, the, the largest number of concerns or objections were really around the impact on businesses, access and parking. In terms of that, that impact on businesses, the main concerns were regarding the reduced ease with which potential customers could access businesses, particularly in the Neepsend area, and the impact on loading and unloading and the loss of passing trade as well. The most frequently mentioned roads were, were Neepsend Lane, Percy Street and Burton Road, and these are all in the Neepsend area. There's a plan of those roads and that specific area in appendix A, and that's page two six eight in the agenda pack. Just in terms of the closure of Neepsend Road, it is junction with Burton Road and Rutland Road. That's required to, in order to allow the introduction of pedestrian and cycle crossings at the Rutland Road, Neepsend Lane and Burton Road junction. In terms of the concerns around Percy Street, we're proposing a one way along Percy Street, originally between Neepsend Lane and Burton Road as part of the wider traffic management measures proposed in Neepsend to reduce through traffic. However, having considered the objections raised by businesses, it's recommended that the proposed one way on the lower section of Percy Street between Neepsend Lane and Burton Road will not be implemented. This section of Percy Street is proposed to remain two way as existing, which would result in minimal variations to the way in which people currently access businesses on Neepsend Lane. Though if this is supported, we will, we will monitor this, this variation to determine if there's any impact in terms of other junctions in the area. The proposed bus gates on Burton Road also aim to reduce through traffic in the Neepsend area, and that's in order to improve bus priority by encouraging drivers to travel around Neepsend rather than through it, and also those drivers that could be trying to avoid congestion at the Shells Mall Roundabout. It's encouraging people to, to remain on the, on the, on the ring road rather than potentially going through Neepsend and Kellam. In terms of access, the main concerns were regarding business and residential access, the introduction of bus gates again on Burton Road, and specifically the impact on current delivery arrangements and the closure of Paradise Street and Vicar Lane. The scheme's been designed so that all businesses remain accessible by all motor vehicles, including H G Vs, though in some circumstances the access route to or from the business may vary. Whilst the introduction of bus gates on Burton Road will prohibit that through traffic, all businesses again will be fully accessible along that road. And the proposed introduction of W L lines as part of the Kellam Island and Neepsend parking scheme will help, help to provide areas for loading and also provide better access, particularly at junctions for H G Vs, by removing the parking that sometimes takes place on those junctions. The closure of Paradise Street at the junction with Westbar is required to, so that safe transition can be accommodated for cyclists around the Westbar Roundabout. And it also, it also will, will ensure that vehicles currently undertaking U turn manoeuvres on Westbar to access Paradise Street do not cross the path of potential cyclists or pedestrians crossing Paradise Street. The alternative route to access Paradise Street would via Silver Street, although that's slightly longer for some customers, for others it will make, make no change. And obviously as a recommendation, given the safety concerns around the entrance to Paradise Street in particular, that that would be the most appropriate route. The, the originally proposed prohibition of motor vehicles on Vicar Lane, that's now been removed from this T R O and from this proposal. There were concerns similar to the, the parking scheme around parking, similar concerns to ones, to the ones in, in that report. But the, the committee is not, it's been recommended that it does not incorporate any parking restrictions which are proposed for inclusion in the Kellam Island and Neepsend parking scheme. This is, this, this is about moving traffic offences in the main, the, the parking restrictions really highlighted in that previous report. Although as part of that, and as part of those concerns, we've taken the opportunity to reduce the length of the prohibition of, of motor vehicles on Neepsend Lane to potentially provide additional parking spaces. To facilitate this, we're proposing to reduce the length of, of the prohibition of vehicles from around eighty eight metres down to twenty metres, although further investigations will be undertaken to determine if additional parking spaces could be accommodated on this section of Neepsend Lane. So in summary, following the feedback during this consultation, we've. So in summary, following the feedback during this consultation, we've proposed a number of amendments to the traffic regulation order proposals, and these are included in the recommendations. So the report recommends that the committee consider the objections to the proposed TRO, authorise the making of the TRO with the following modifications to the original proposal, which include the removal of the one way on Percy Street between Neepsend Lane and Burton Road, the removal of the one ways on Roland Street and Wilson Street, and that's due to multiple accesses that a business requires on those streets, the removal of the prohibition of motor vehicles on Vicar Lane, a reduction in the length of the prohibition of motor vehicles on Neepsend Lane from 88 metres to 20 metres from its junction with Burton Road, and a further separate TRO will be promoted on Paradise Street and Silver Street to improve access to business on Paradise Street as a result of the proposed closure of Paradise Street. All officers will inform objectors accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andrew, and for taking us through that report. I think sometimes we forget how much work goes into producing these reports, and, you know, these are impressive recommendations for us to take forward. I'm mindful of the guillotine that we are up against, but I don't want to curtail debate and discussion. Are there any members who wish to ask any questions or make any particular points today on this item? I can see councillor Merzow.
Thank you. As ward councillors, we very much support the scheme. We voted unanimously in this committee for the decarbonisation roadmap, which clearly details the need for schemes like this, which enable people to change to sustainable journeys. I commend the officers for the work that they've done in looking at ways to access, to address access concerns for residents and businesses, and it's good that you'll be gathering data to see what effect these proposals have. Thank you very much. I'd like to support the scheme.
Thank you very much, Ruth. I don't necessarily think that needs an answer from officers, but Andrew, of course, is welcome to come back if he wants to. No, not at all. Do I see any other colleagues around the room who'd like to make a contribution? I don't. Well, okay, that therefore moves us to the recommendations, which are on page 244, and Andrew did outline those to us very comprehensively. Are we all in agreement? If we're not, can I ask colleagues to raise their hands? Is no one raising their hands? Therefore, we all are in agreement, and therefore that item and those recommendations have passed unanimously. So thank you very much to Andrew and colleagues for putting together this report and for bringing forward these exciting plans. Thank you. That therefore concludes the items for discussion in our committee today. Thank you very much for all members for coming along. Thank you very much for officers for bringing reports and staffing the meeting, and thank you very much to members of the public for citizens of the city for asking questions, bringing petitions. Thank you and have a good afternoon.